There's what we call the total cost of employment for the different fire positions. And we have this information both for the legacy employees, these are the employees who are at the 3% at age 50 retirement formula, as well as the new employees which at both CalFire and the JPA are at 3% at age 55. And I should point out that obviously neither of these agencies has a third tier much as the city does. And as we develop the city fire department, you will see that that does in fact have a third tier. So they will be receiving benefits that are lower than what we're about to show you, more like a 2% at age 50 or age 55 benefit. So the first table is the table for the state controllers data from two years ago. You'll see that of the 13 agencies shown that Belmont, San Carlos has the highest, the second highest average pay for firefighters and captains and the highest for fire chief, the top is Redwood City. And I think the other thing that's interesting to notice here is, as we've said before to the council, in the new city fire department, we would propose that the salaries be set at a level that would be the average of Millbrae and Pacifica, where as you can see is a bit further down the stack.
Mr. Moore, just a quick correction, we're actually third highest in fire captain pay, Sam Mateo is second highest.
Excuse me, that's correct. Okay, then we'll move on to the other set of data from Belmont and CalFire. This is the comparison of total cost. This is, the first table shows you the legacy staff or most of the employees who are at the 3% at age 50 formula in both agencies. You can see here, the difference in cost to the agency per position is anywhere from $54,000 to $106,000 per position per year. And the thing to note in this table and also the other one is in any future fire department in San Carlos, whether it's a city department or whether it's a hybrid or a contractor, we will need something on the order of 17 to 21 sworn positions. So as you look at those numbers and multiply by 17 to 21, you can see how important managing the cost of salary and benefits is. Similarly, for new hires, the, those are the numbers at 3% at 55, a little bit less of a difference, again, taking out the retirement costs, but still a difference of between $30,000 to $66,000 per year per position, again, pretty substantial savings. Now on to the dissolution project, process and some updates there. You have in your packet the March work paper for dissolution, work in the last 30 days. The main focuses have been on PERS wrap-up costs, and we're exploring both PERS costs to the parent agencies going forward if the fire JPA continues to exist as a shell organization, that is, it's still there, but it's not providing fire service, and as well as if it is wrapped up. We've also done some labor research with LCW, and that's been helpful in terms of moving forward. I wanted to highlight for you, next item, the fire JPA, as some of you know, the fire JPA under the JPA terms can only adopt 12 months of budget at a time. The budget expires at June 30th of 2011. The two parent agencies as well as the fire JPA will need to adopt another budget prior to July 1st, or the agency won't be able to proceed after June 30th. So that's a fairly important milestone, has not yet been taken up by the fire board, I assume it will be taken up shortly. The distribution of apparatus and vehicles, I'm pleased to say that subsequent to your action last month, there was unanimous approval of that distribution list from both Belmont and the fire JPA, so that distribution is now final. The seven vehicles and apparatus that we showed you last month are indeed now the ones that will be heading to San Carlos after the service termination date. Turning to the new area ladder truck, that also has now received final approval votes from Belmont and the fire JPA. The next step in that process will be the development of a legal agreement by the three attorneys, namely Ms. Savery representing the fire JPA, Mr. Cole Antuano representing Belmont, and Ms. Casman representing San Carlos, to formally assign the FEMA grant to Belmont Fire Protection District and to work out the details. So while the apparatus and vehicles are now done, the ladder truck has one more step before it is done. And then finally vacancies at the fire JPA, and this, this came up, I believe, at an early meeting, questions from Mr. Grocott, and as I noted, the fire board has asked at its last meeting to have this topic agendized, so it's coming up. There's a couple options there in terms of contracting with other agencies and also using the so-called perdiem firefighters and other positions. And of course, as I mentioned last time, the fire marshal is transferred to Redwood City, and so because Redwood City and the JPA share that position, that individual will be continued to work with the three agencies, albeit at a slightly higher cost. And we move on to things happening at the county. At the county, the county has announced their budget deficit continues to increase, it is now at $53 million. They have a further need for budget savings than earlier projected. In the county, the fire budget is actually considered by the Criminal Justice Subcommittee, kind of interesting. They have doubled their target for fire savings due to a drop in property tax revenues in the unincorporated areas. They're now looking for $2 million of savings in county fire, not one. Some of the areas that they're exploring to reduce their fire costs include the use of the quick rescue EMS units and cross staffing that were originally discussed in the Tri-Data report for San Carlos. So even though we haven't moved forward with using those cost cutting opportunities, nice to see the counties taking advantage of our report. And they also are proposing to reduce the number of people in each of their fire companies from three people to two. You, you probably know that we've heard from the union that in some cases they'd like to see four people on a truck company and three people on an engine company. The county is now suggesting that they are in such financial dire straits that they will no longer be able to put three people on a company, they're now talking about going to two. There also remains no mention of partnering with the city on the $650,000 potential annual savings with the county CalFire option, but again, that remains out there, we'll see what happens as time goes on. Turning to the other county issue, the county's free mediation offer on fire options, as you know, San Carlos agreed to this proposal in February. Belmont received a 10-day letter from Supervisor Grimm a couple weeks ago on the 15th, and last week voted three to two to proceed. The county has hired a retired judge from the Court of Appeals, Judge Hannig, from JARS to mediate the issue. Those of you who remember the HIA issue will probably recall that JARS also mediated that issue years ago, and in fact, Mayor Feierbach from Belmont that their current processes to explore fire options will continue notwithstanding mediation option. And finally, we have received a letter from the firefighters union. You will probably recall that a year ago in March, there was a letter to then Mayor Royce about some fire issues, and Mr. Royce responded to that letter by email and also met with the firefighters union. This particular letter, and again, this is also on the website, responds to or shares a variety of the union's issues on numerous topics, we won't go through all of those. Some of the highlights, the staff sees them, is the union which originally supported the new formula where San Carlos pays more is now suggesting that we go back to the original 50-50 formula from five years ago, it's an interesting change in position. The union says they're very concerned about the rising cost of pensions and benefits for firefighters. I think that mirrors concerns that the staff and the council has as well. The firefighters union says that they believe that anyone that wishes to continue or wishes to provide the hazmat service needs 24 sworn staff. To do that, that's of particular interest to us because under our various proposals, it is proposed that San Carlos would only have 17 to 21 sworn staff. So if we follow the union's recommendation, unless we partner with someone, we would not be able to do that service anymore. And finally, they have indicated that they have privately proposed to certain people a total compensation offer and something to be considered by the fire JPA. I note here, and it's also in the staff report, that we've reviewed the letter with our legal counsel, Joan Casman, who's in the audience, if you wish to ask her questions. Ms. Casman points out that the and labor agreements between the firefighters union and firefighters are with the Belmont-San Carlos And because of that, Ms. Casman advises the city, both the staff and the council members, that such offers should be handled by the fire JPA negotiators, namely Coradino, the HR director, and Chief Frye. And she also has additional advice for the city to make sure that the city takes steps to reinforce the fact that the city is a separate employment agency from the JPA. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Council may have about this month's update.
Let me take public comment at this point, and then we'll turn it to questions.
All right.
Mr. Randall and Pat Bell, thank Mr. Randall first. Good evening, Mr. Randall, you're recognized for two minutes.
Good evening. Brian Randall, San Carlos. I have a question. Well, first of all, I'd like to say I'm glad we didn't get CalFire. But my question is, what is the starting rate for Belmont-San Carlos firemen? And how does that compare with Redwood City? Thank you.
Gentlemen, yield the balance of his time. Ms. Bell. Good evening, Ms. Bell, you're recognized for two minutes.
And I want to know why this conciliatory letter that was written to Mayor Royce was never shared never shared with this council, and was never shared with the fire board, was handled just by Mr. Royce, as though it were a personal communication with him, when actually it's addressed to him at the city hall address as the mayor of San Carlos. I now hear from Mr. Moore that he went and talked to the firefighters, but he didn't talk to us, didn't talk to the public, didn't talk to the council, didn't talk to the fire board. And that seems improper to me, when he gets a letter as the mayor, that he'd not just stick it in his back pocket and go on his merry way. We could have had concessions from firefighters, we could have changed those numbers that Mr. Moore just presented. The firefighters have been willing for a long time to sit down and talk about concessions. You have not.
Speaker Neil's balance of time. I'll start from my right, Mr. Griselli.
I have no questions for Mr. Moore.
Mr. Klein.
Just a couple of questions for Mr. Moore. So the W2 wages we're showing don't include about 12% of an increase.
That's correct.
Do we have no, since Redwood City's number one on that list, what they gave in those past two years?
I don't know off the top of my head, but we could certainly research that and get back to you.
Okay, that'd be nice to know, because there's a good shot that we might move up on that list. Also, you talked about the budget coming up, there, on the website of the fire board, there's a planned budget.
Hmm.
That hasn't been approved at all, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. And then when you say there's no impact of the fire marshal moving to Redwood City, wouldn't it be correct to assume, since Redwood City does pay higher than we do, that there will be a financial impact, because the fire marshal will be paying, being paid more?
You are correct, Vice Mayor, and actually, I think in the report, it does allude to that by saying there'll be a slightly increased cost, yes.
Okay, those are my only questions.
Thank you. Mr. Royce.
Yeah, Mr. Moore, first of all, you mentioned the meeting coming up, very important meeting, April 18th. I'm assuming that's here in this room?
Yes.
It'll be televised?
Yes.
And web, and what, 7 o'clock?
Uh...
Do we have a time set on that?
I don't know that we set a time, did we set a time?
We did not set a time.
We did not, I'm guessing it's 6 or 7.
It's around 6 or 7, okay, well, we'll see that on the webpage. Just want to make sure that the public knows, that they could come in person, or view that at home, or on the web.
Absolutely.
Yeah, a couple of questions, other questions. On page one, you talk, and, you know, I've been, you know, trying to, I'm not on the board, but I'm trying to learn as much as I can about fire, in reading Belmont's minutes, and listening to their council meetings and so forth. And a lot of the discussion has talked about, you know, the, the cost of the dissolution, and the cost of not dissolving. And you kind of cover this in that first page. And of course, we, and the fire board, historically in the last five years, has been focused on, on the operating cost. I think it was 30% increase in cost, in our JPA over the last five years. You quote in this report, a 13% increase over the past year.
Mm-hmm.
I am also very interested in, in the balance sheet, I've talked about that a couple of meetings ago, again, the unfunded liabilities, the side fund, the vacation accrual, sick, sick time, those are all, what I found out, of course, have been accrued, but not really, they haven't been funded, there's no money to pay for those, so those monies are going to have to come out. So my specific question is, this allocation of 50-50, which is now 53?
Mm-hmm.
What goes on there? I mean, my main question, are there risks involved in, in what we do and when we do it? You know, is that number, could that number be 58% next week? I mean, I don't know, but what, because that is a number that not only affects the operating cost on how much we pick up, as we look at all these options, but it also impacts those unfunded liabilities, which are huge.
Mm-hmm.
So where are we with that 53%?
Okay, council member Royce, you are correct, that there is a formula in place that unlike five years ago, where it was equally shared, is based on a multi-part formula, which includes assessed valuation, which is the, seems to be the main driver, some of the other factors, such as the number of fire companies, and the number of fire calls is roughly equivalent, the number of fire companies is the same population, there's slightly more population in San Carlos, but the assessed valuation is the one, it's a little lopsided. And that's the reason primarily, that the formula has changed from 50-50 five years ago, to 53 and a half, 46 and a half, or whatever it is right now. And it has gone up each year, where San Carlos has paid more of the cost of fire in Belmont and San Carlos, and Belmont has paid less. If the trend continues, that, that cost will shift more and more to San Carlos each year, you know, barring any major change. One interesting thing about that, by the way, is under the terms of the JPA, once a dissolution letter is set, the formula is frozen, the annual increases to San Carlos stop. So at the moment, in the next year, we will not pay an additional share because of this freezing effect, if you want to call it that. However, if the letter's withdrawn, then we go back to the formula, and likely, the number will get even higher for us. I think the other thing, too, that we called out in the memo this time in writing, and I think we talked about it verbally last time, but I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware, that there's a lot of talk in the media, and in other agencies such as the county, there's this romantic notion that you can continue the fire JPA as-is by simply withdrawing the letter. But as I noted in the memo, that's not correct, that because a year and a half ago, it was envisioned that the fire JPA would end in October of 2011, the fire board and the two parent agencies decided to spend all of the reserves at the fire JPA down to zero, and that is the current plan through October. What that means is, if somehow magically the JPA springs back to life, let's say, in October, someone is going to need to pay the real cost of fire. This year, San Carlos is not paying their real cost of fire, $7.1 million, but rather, we are paying only $6.3 million. We are in effect getting a 800% subsidy, or $800,000 subsidy from the balance at the fire JPA, and Belmont is getting a similar subsidy from the fire balance. If the JPA continues on, the two parent agencies have some choices, I'm not sure they're all attractive ones. Number one, they can increase their fire contributions rather dramatically, to make up not only that $800,000 for this year, but also any cost increases for next year. And we already know, for example, that the cost of retirement for the legacy firefighters at the JPA next year is going to go from 61% of payroll to 66% of payroll, so there will be another increase there. The other choice, of course, is for the two parent agencies to reduce some of their other services, non-fire, and use that money to pay for the increased cost of fire. So I think it needs to be said, and everybody needs to be clear, that while continuing the JPA post-October 12th is possible, the money to do so is not there like it was this year. In other words, that subsidy, the $800,000 is gone now. So for the JPA to continue as-is, to use that expression that we hear so often, someone's going to have to find the $800,000 plus the increased costs of pension and other things that will occur next year.
Through the chair.
But also, if the, you're basing on the budget that we have now.
True.
Right, if the budget goes down, for whatever reason?
Mm-hmm.
That would be less money.
True, and you know this year, we did cut the budget a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Right, so I'm saying...
So theoretically possible.
Theoretically, it could go, it'd be a lot less than, you know, substantially less than what you're saying. I want to make sure everybody understands that, it's based on the budget that was adopted.
Right.
So that, if it goes up, the budget goes up, those costs go up.
Right.
If it stays the same, certainly those funds, if the budget goes down, costs are less.
True, and I guess, and I guess the only thing, too, I'd point out, and again, the two fire commissioners can amplify, we also need to point out that this year, the Belmont representatives were quite clear that they were unwilling to cut any more than $200,000 out of the budget, because they felt going beyond that would, quote, "affect fire service", in their opinion. Their attitude may be different in the future, as Mr. Griselli suggests, you know, we will see.
Mr. Royce.
Okay, great, then thank you very much. And my last question is, you actually, you showed a slide up there, it's on page three of our report, you talked about, you know, the cost of a firefighter, and of course, the first slide is from outside data from, from the state, that talks about just their salary costs, salary benefits, vacation pay, and things like that.
Right.
In comparison, like, you know, I'm amazed at the differences, you know, in fact, where we have the same 2,400, I believe, we have like, for example, Foster City, where the average pay is 109,000, and for Belmont-San Carlos, it's 142,000, but then you also said there's been 6 plus 6% increases, so it could be not only 30% more, what I calculated, it could be, you know, 40% more, when you add in another, you know, 12%, but I don't know what, what Foster City went up. But this is significant, 30 to 40% more cost in Foster, than compared to Foster City. And Foster City, and I use that as an example, because they're basically our size, they're, they're right next to us, or across the way. We have two fire stations, they have one, but it's twice as big with two companies. They, they do have more people, I mean, we have more, because it's a JPA with two cities, but if you say we are 50 or 53% of the people, they still have another 20% more people, I think. But why could there be such a distinguishment, or a difference? You know, this is in Phoenix, the Bay Area, this is Foster City, 2,400 firefighters to Belmont-San Carlos, 2,400, 30 to 40% difference.
Yeah, and I think, council member Royce, there are no, you know, without getting into the specifics, or knowing the specifics, there are a number of potential explanations. One is that the average age in Belmont-San Carlos of the fire staff is, is 47 to 48, as I recall. In some of the other cities, it may be lower, and that may mean that some of the firefighters may tend to be in some of the earlier steps, where in Belmont-San Carlos, more of them percentage-wise may be, say, on the sixth step, with the highest salary. That number also includes overtime, we may have more overtime charges than other cities, perhaps. It also includes vacation and sick leave pay, we have in our fire JPA, as you know, a rather generous program, where some individuals get cash when they leave for their sick leave balances. The city, for example, has never had that particular benefit. So there's a number of potential explanations as why that difference is as large it is. But I'd also point out, as I mentioned earlier, under the proposed hybrid model, and also the city fire department, the staff would propose to reset or re-benchmark the salary and benefits, so that moving forward, under those two models, we would not have as generous pay and benefits and retirement systems as the fire JPA does, and that obviously, right there, would reduce our costs pretty substantially.
And my last is just a comment, there was public comment, because it does relate to fire, talking about a letter that was sent to myself as mayor last, last year. I just want to qualify that, I think anybody up here on, on the dais knows, and many people in San Carlos, I'm very proactive in, in talking to people, or if you want a need for coffee, I'll, I'll talk to you on the phone as long as you want. People who email me, I will generally, a lot of times, try to find out the phone number and call them, to try to talk to them more, try to learn as much as I can. I think as a council member, that's our duty. As an example, Friday, I was talking, this, this past week, there's a citizen who's interested in beekeeping in San Carlos. Friday, I talked to city manager, I met with San Carlos Green on Friday, a member, because I would think they would be very interested in beekeeping and honeybees, they do a lot of good for the earth. Today, I've met with one, and attempted to meet with a second member of the 4-H Club, who has bees in San Carlos. So if you talk about, you know, getting a letter, yes, I got a letter, I will do, in the best of my ability, to communicate, and understand, and talk to citizens who want to talk to me. And so that is my response to the fire board, and I did the same with fire. I not only met with the president of the union, I, I met with, what's Gary Jacobs called?
Who's the local representative?
Local rep.
Right.
Coffee, I mean, I am available, and try to make myself totally available, because that's how we do things in, in San Carlos, we, we talk to people. And, and I try to try, very, I try to do the best I can, I know I'm not perfect with it, I try to put the time in doing that. So again, that's my long-winded response to one person here, thank you.
Mr. Grocott, seeing that you have a number of questions listed up.
The, yeah, I do have a number of questions. One of them was related to the topic that Randy just finished with, and that is just simply, was the letter to the mayor shared with the rest of the council?
I believe it was, as I recall, I checked, Christine, do you recall if we CC'd the letter that went to Randy last year to all the council members? I seem to recall that it was, but I have to go back and look.
Typically, that's our process, yes.
I believe it was, yes. And I believe, as, as the mayor, excuse me, as Mr. Royce said, there was a email reply to Mr. Hawkins that was CC'd to the council and staff, and he also apparently met with Mr. Hawkins, although obviously, that's something between him and Mr. Hawkins.
Can you follow me up on that? Mr. Hawkins does, he speaks about his letter, and he says that, no one from the city of San Carlos responded to my letter, and that was unfortunate, because it was our intent to eliminate the upcoming payroll increases, increases that contract required. What he's talking about is these 6%, actually, it's broken down, it's every six months, a certain percent.
Right, it's, it's...
Oh, and it was in the last year, it was a five-year contract, three years flat, and then the last two years, there were increases.
Two years flat.
Excuse me?
No, the first two years were flat.
The first two years were flat.
Correct.
Okay, and then it was the three years that...
Correct.
...had increases, okay, my, my bad.
Right.
And, and the increases were every six months.
That's correct. There was a 1% each July 1st, plus there was 2.5% every July 1st and January 1st.
What was it again, how much?
1% in July 1st, and in addition, 2.5 in July 1st and January 1st, adds up to 6%.
Adds up to 6% at the end of each year.
That's correct. The other thing I should point out as well, and I think we mentioned it, I'm not sure if it's last month or the month before, but a year ago, around the time of the Hawkins' letter, number one, the two current fire commissioners, Mr. Ahmad and Mr. Klein, talked with Ms. Dino and Mr. Frye about salary concessions. And they worked through the process, because as we mentioned earlier, the relationship is not with the city, it's with the fire JPA. And as I understand it, in fact, we have, I believe it in writing from Ms. Dino, the chief and Ms. Dino met with the two local firefighters, they did not meet with Mr. Hawkins, they met with Mr. Jacobs and Mr. Way, as I understand it. And a year ago, those two individuals told Mr. Frye and Ms. Dino they were not interested in concessions, and in fact, they used the rather colorful expressions that the chief could pound sand, which I assume is a no. Now, Mr. Hawkins was not party to that, and that might explain why he was unaware that his two local, I guess you call them shop stewards, or whatever.
What timeframe was that?
That was early last year, I believe, I'm looking at Mr. Ahmad, and...
Can you give me a date?
Do you guys know when you made that request?
I don't exactly remember when we made the request, but it will be in the fire board minutes, because the chief stated at a public meeting that we, he was told to pound sand, so we can find that information out for you.
Yeah, we can research the exact date, but...
I would just be curious to know what, what that date was relative to the dissolution letter going out.
As I recall, it was a month or two after the dissolution letter, to your point.
So that would make sense, because you give a dissolution letter, you say you're taking in a part, a fire department, and you're looking very strongly, at that point, there was a lot of discussion about the state. I can understand why they would not, at that point, be too inclined to talk labor concessions.
Well, again, I mean, I guess it's a question of statements here, Mr. Hawkins says he was open to concessions, his two representatives, again, admittedly at a lower level, clearly were not. To your point, you're correct.
But what he's saying is, he sent a letter in April, and there was no follow-up on that letter in April, to his saying that the union is willing to make concessions.
Other than Mr. Royce's email reply, right?
Yeah, but Mr. Royce doesn't sit on the fire board, and you just said yourself that it's the, it's not the city, it's fire department, CCA.
Again, I guess, just to try to, you know, because Mr. Hawkins' letter covers a lot of ground, one of his comments is, Mr. Royce didn't respond to him, and actually, he did, but it was by an email, not a written response, so when he says he didn't get a written response, that's technically true, he got an electronic response. In terms of the question about the salary discussion, it's technically true that Mr. Hawkins didn't have that discussion, Mr. Jacobs and Mr. Way had the discussion, and the discussion wasn't with...
Like, two months after the dissolution letter was sent?
True, and the, and the discussion was with, between Mr. Frye and Mr. Way and Mr. Jacobs, not with Mr. Hawkins. So again, a lot of these, as you read Mr. Hawkins' letter, some of the stuff he says, I guess, the way I read it was, some of it's technically true, you know, he was... He wasn't discussing this with Chief Frye, his two local folks were discussing with Chief Frye, you know, at the request of our two fire commissioners.
By the way, do you know what's the starting rate compared?
I didn't bring it with me, but we do have that, we can get it for you.
Okay, that'd be good. Now, the contract that we had, the five-year contract, it also states, doesn't it, that at the end of the five-year contract, the idea there was, you know, we were building a new, a new fire department, and we needed to be able to budget. So at the time, when we made that agreement, you know, fire departments were giving away 3% to 7% increases at the time. And, you know, you'd sit down in labor negotiations, and you were talking anywhere from 3% to 7% payroll increases. And so the idea was, let's lock it down for two years, and then we'll give, in the next three years, we'll give increases. But I seem to remember, correct me if I'm wrong, there was an agreement in there that at the end of the five-year contract, then what we would do is look and see where we are. Are we way above everybody else, or are we below everybody else? There was, in fact, there was a catch-up clause in the contract.
Right, and that was for every year?
Which, you know, we didn't know. It was five years ago, looking ahead, that's pretty hard to forecast. So my point is that, at the end of the five years, which we've reached, of course, there's an opportunity to open things up and take another look at it and make some, you know, if these guys are willing to make concessions, where would that put us? For instance, if we did a 10% reduction, where would those, what would those numbers look like in this chart you gave us on page three?
Well, where we are right now with the union is their contract goes through June 30th of this year, and they've agreed to extend it until the service termination date. So it actually now goes through October 12th. And for the period between July 1 and October 12th, there's no increase for those few months.
That didn't answer my question. My question was if we were to go back to them and say, hey, you know, you've opened up the door to negotiations, and you've even mentioned in the letter about 10% cuts. So if we applied those 10% cut to these numbers, where would that put us?
Right, and that's something we could research.
Well, Mr. Moore, to go with Mr. Grokot's question, I think it's pretty simple. If we have to add 12% to this to have the real numbers, because they got 12% increase over the two years after this, taking about 10%, it's going to be about exactly, almost the same. Because we, you have to add 12%, and if they're going to give us 10% back...
I, I, I...
Not that easy.
If we can please go through the chair. I'd like Mr. Grokot to finish his questioning.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I don't believe it's that easy, because these numbers, as Mr. Moore stated, deal with W-2s. So W-2s include overtime pay, sick payout that, you know, they want to get off their books, each individual employee. And you said something about we don't do that as a city. I've seen that happen with city employees.
Well, I...
Let me, if I may, Mr. Grokot, what I'm understanding, which I will agree with the request, Mr. Moore will staff come back with a, with a chart showing a 10% reduction following this.
We can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Okay, that'd be good. Yeah, it'd be interesting to see where that would be.
Right, and actually, just through the chair, just so you know, what we're, what we're planning to do is we're actually planning, and again, we can do it sooner, but what we were planning to do as part of our presentation, either on the 18th or the 25th, is to actually show you not only the current salary range for the JPA, but also to show you where we would propose putting the salaries in the new city fire department. But we could certainly add some of these additional requests as well.
Just a comment, I do know, because you pointed out that overtime's included in there, and I know when Bob and I were on the Fire Board, you know, we tested that figure a number of times about the use of overtime. And, you know, Thomas Phil and the chief assured us that really what we were, what we were playing, what we were dealing with is, you know, you hire an employee, and that employee comes with benefit costs, of course. You know, you had to have 30 to 40%, depending on where Calpers is at the time, to that salary to pay for benefits. So sometimes it makes sense to use overtime, as long as the guys are willing to work it, and not hire an employee. And of course, that impacts their take-home pay, the, how much overtime is used. So I guess what I'm saying is that, especially with a department of the size of the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department, which is not that big, you can get into a situation where you're using overtime perhaps more than you are with a, you know, a deeper bench, as we talked about when we were talking about the sheriff's office. You have more employees, you use overtime less. We didn't have that situation.
Well, I should...
But we did, you know, at that time on the Fire Board, I think Mr. Klein said one time at a recent meeting that that's never been looked at. That's not quite true. We did look at it, when we were on the Fire Board, we challenged it a number of times when we looked at the budget, and, in fact, as a, as a response to Mr. Griselli and myself challenging, and the Belmont people too, challenging the use of overtime, Thomas Phil developed a program, a spreadsheet, to track the use of overtime and to show us what was unscheduled versus scheduled use of overtime, the whole thing, so that we could see where we were and incorporate that into our budget and our thinking.
Right, and I would just add to that, that again, when you see the city fire department, we have some ideas at the staff level on how to further reduce overtime. Remember that when you set up your own fire department, since you're restarting, you're starting with a brand-new MOU. So we have some ideas on how to further reduce overtime, but we'll get into that on April 18th.
It'd be interesting to see.
Do you have a further question or request?
Yeah, I have a couple more questions here. One is, you had mentioned if the shift continues, you were talking about the funding formula. Now, I'm not on the Fire Board, so I don't really get all these figures anymore, but it's my understanding, actually, that if we had not gone through the freeze because of the dissolution and applied the new numbers to this year's, to the current year that we're in, our percentage would have actually gone down, because fire calls in Belmont were higher than they were in San Carlos. What would have changed it?
Mr. Grokot, could you go with your other questions also?
No, I want to get you the answer to this one.
How many do you have afterward?
One more.
Okay, the, it would have gone up a little bit more. It wouldn't have been as rapid as it has been in the last couple of years, but it still would have been up, I think, a tenth or two-tenths of a percent, as I recall.
So if the fire calls went up in Belmont and down for us, the factor was what, assessed valuation?
Yeah, the reason is that the growth in assessed valuation was quite a bit higher than the differential fire call. The fire calls, you're right, and then it flips back and forth into who has the most, but they're very close.
Yeah.
So even when they have slightly more, it still doesn't affect the formula that much.
Right, well, it's 25% of the thing, so. And then you talked about the reserves being gone, which, believe me, that hurts a lot, because that's something we worked very hard on, making sure that the department was building reserve, so that when things came up, as were coming up, like equipment, failures and so forth, instead of having to go to our parent cities and ask for money, they had the money to deal with it. So that's unfortunate to hear, but you also said that's a bit of a bugaboo if we try to put the thing back together. So that leads me to this, my final question is, you talked about mediation. I hope we're not wasting people's time, because to what effort is mediation if we're going to, what do we hope to achieve getting on the other side of it if we don't even have money to run a fire department?
Well, my understanding is the mediation, the intent is to talk about all things related to fire options both cities have. So one would imagine the JPA may come up, but there may be other things that come up as well. The hybrid model might coming up, both of us working with Redwood City might come up. So I think at the end of the day, until the mediation happens, it's hard for any of us to crystal ball, you know, what may or may not come out of it. But I would think that because the scope is rather broad, while the JPA is probably going to come up, it's not the only topic. Or that's what I would imagine.
Not the only topic.
Not the only topic.
And then I have some comments when we get to that time. This is questions, right?
Questions is not an action item.
I know it isn't.
Okay.
If you have some final comments, let's go ahead and take them.
I just asked about mediation and what I would, you know, see what's the hope of getting out on, what's the hope of the other side of mediation? And one of the things that I could see happening, honestly, guys, is that I could see a, if we were to go through mediation and then keep the JPA together, it could look far different than it does today, in that you could have a JPA where the equipment, you know, we've gone through the dissolution process, we've identified equipment, right? So fine, each city would get its own equipment. We would get the engines that are coming to us, Belmont would get the truck, we'd, of course, have our own fire stations. And that alone would, and that would just be part of our, our city budget, it'd be part of their city budget or their fire district budget, to pay for fire stations, upkeep, improvement to them, whatever. And the same thing with engines, breathing equipment, turnout gear, all of it. And that would give us control on some of those costs, because if we wanted to, you know, currently, there's a schedule, I think, to replace engines every 10 years. Well, we could say, we don't want to replace an engine every 10 years, we want to do it every 15 years, or every 20 years, whatever our risk is. And there are other costs involved with, you know, your own equipment, your, how you, your courtyard, you get the mechanics of things taken care of, you pay for your own fuel, all of it. The only thing that's in the JPA, then, are the employees, your firefighters, your chief and all that, up and down the line. And with those employees, you know, you show those, and you continue on in a JPA, at least for a time. It's a bit of, what I would see with that is the federated model that folks are talking about for regional. And that would be an advantage to set up with our current JPA, convert to that model, and then as, as the regional talks go on, we'd be best prepared for the regional model that's being talked about. So I would hope something like that could be looked at, studied. Do we have the, what would that look like budget-wise? And, you know, that might be a good way to go.
Mr. Royce?
Yeah, just one recommended action item when you come back on the 18th, or as we start looking and understanding all the costs associated with what we do with fire. Relates very much to what I said the first time. Again, the balance sheet. Mr. Moore, if you could, the, when the JPA was created five or six years ago, we, hopefully we have some data, I think, I'm sure we have data on what the unfunded liability is, which we've been amortizing. That's for the public, that's a pension. When benefits were changed, it created a huge liability that we couldn't afford to even pay for a year, so we're amortizing it over 12 years or 13 years or something, and have that amount. And then we have all these other unfunded liabilities, which is kind of a, getting a lot of attention from council members and the, and the people out there, because it's really a cost. Again, when, when the JPA talked about, yeah, we accrued, but we never funded the, these liabilities. So as an example, sick time and vacation time, a lot of sick time for firefighters accrues and accrues and accrues until they retire. So it's something that needs to be paid out, but there's no money, there are no funds to pay that out. So there are two points, or there are requests to know where we were when we started, where we are now, and it'll be interesting to see if those unfunded liabilities grew over time. My sense is that we could have been operating this JPA a little bit like Bonnie and Clyde, like, you know, don't worry about it, next week we'll get another bank, we'll pay for it then, because we never put the cash in the balance sheet. And so to see if it's gotten worse from an unfunded liability, if we did a Bonnie and Clyde, I want to make sure we don't play Bonnie and Clyde with our new organization. I want to make sure we make some tough decisions, we're honest to the firefighters who we're paying, we're honest to the public and to ourselves, to say, hey, sick, sick time, we're going to accrue it and fund it in the balance sheet, so the money is there. And I could go on and on about all the other ones. Things like the side funding, you know, no way in heck, again, are we going to be able to afford it, but then have a real distinct plan on where we go in the next five years. So again, I know you'd be, we're going to focus a lot on firefighter costs and cost of running a fire department, but because these balance sheet items, these unfunded liabilities are huge, and they need to be managed, I think, better than the past, kind of having some trail, beginning where we are now and where we're going, and how to manage those. Is that something reasonable to ask, I'd point that out?
I think we can certainly look at that, and I think certainly, one of the reasons, for example, that the current year budget went up 13% is, as we mentioned to you in last May when you approved the budget, is that it does include some of those sick leave payouts that, as I mentioned earlier, the city doesn't allow cash payouts, the fire JPA does. So for example, that budget has something on the order of $385,000 for the chief's retirement payout. Now, obviously...
380, 400?
385,000, right. But that assumed a retirement last October. Since that retirement hasn't occurred, the actual cost will probably be more like $400,000. So you're right, that extra $1,500, we're going to have to find somewhere.
Yeah. I'd like to understand that better. That'd be great. Thank you, that's all I have.
Please, the chair.
If I could put you hold, we've given you 25 minutes at this point, I'd like to get some other comments. Mr. Klein?
Okay, just to discuss kind of what, what we're talking about here. Mr. Moore, can you come up to the podium? I need you to click up a slide for me. So we're looking at the salary and pay, and Mr. Grokot spoke about how if we keep the JPA together, we should keep the employees in the JPA, and I actually think that's the downfall of this JPA. If you look, we are second highest in, in pay for our firefighters on the W-2 salary, and I put together this little table using nothing but Google and city websites. It's very interesting to see, and I have a hard time understanding why we are at the level that we're at, because it doesn't match up with our population, it doesn't match up with our tax rates, and I'm hoping it's going to come up.
I was going to say, I'm trying to load it here. Hopefully, acrobats on this computer.
And it appears like we're having issues, but here, I'll pass this out for the council, and then if anyone in the public wants to see it, well, it's a shame. But what it shows is, for average 2009 firefighter salaries, we are second in the county. Population, if you take the populations of Belmont and San Carlos put together, it's, we are sixth in the county. If you take the population of San Carlos itself, ah, there it is, we are 11th, and if you take our tax rate, we are 14th. So the question is, why are we paying second when there's nothing about San Carlos that's a number two? We don't have a large population, even combined with Belmont, we're not number two. So keeping the firefighters, keeping labor negotiations together in this JPA is what is killing us financially. If you look at the table that Mr. Moore put, there's a bunch of cities that don't have fire chief pay, and it's because they exist in JPA's like North County and Central County, where payroll is separate. The cities pay their firefighters what they pay their firefighters, and they negotiate the contracts. And if you look at all those cities, they're all beneath us. Pacifica, 104, Brisbane, Hillsborough, they're all far beneath us. And the reason is because they handle their employees the way they treat their employees across the entire city. They don't put a set employee group with a different board negotiating those contracts. And when you ask why these salaries have jumped, it's because we allowed them to. We gave a five-year contract with two years of freezes, that's correct, but 18% on the back end. And I know that helps budgeting through the future, but if you have no money, it doesn't matter what.
Please, the chair, I apologize, excuse me, are we going to be discussing fire for a couple more hours? Because I was not prepared to do this.
And I'd prefer just to finish up comments and draw an end to this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, I was prepared, but I'll also cut my comments short. So I think the best thing that we can do is the federation model, which is actually where you split the employees. You share management, you share training, you share all those things that make sense to share, but you're able to keep your employees on a manageable scale. And as you can see by that table right there, we are not at a manageable scale. And it'd be different as a council if we had said, public safety is number one, we're going to keep giving them money no matter what. But if you looked, if we did that same scale when we had a fire department, or a police department, San Carlos is at the bottom or second to last. So it was never a public safety thing, it's just we have allowed these firefighter salaries and benefits to go through the roof, and that's where the money is to be saved, that's how we fix this, and that's how we're able to provide effective public safety in this town. It's not keeping it in the same broken formula that it already is. That's all I have.
Mr. Griselli?
No, I just, there's, it's easy to look back. And, you know, the way I did the math, if you say 6% a year, Mr. Moore, that's 18%, correct?
Correct.
Divided by five years, what does it come out to be? 3.5%? 3.7%? If you go back five years, 3.7%, as Mr. Grokot indicated earlier, was hardly out of the ballpark. So I just want to make that point, that that's what we did, right or wrong, that's what we did. So I want to make sure that everyone understands that people were paying attention, but times do change, and we are in 2011, not in 2006 anymore, so. That's all I had. Thank you.
Gentlemen, we will have significant opportunity to continue to discuss this. Gentlemen, we will have significant opportunity to continue to discuss this. And April 18, we will set the time to do it. My comments are going to be fairly brief on this point. There's a question about mediation. Within about an hour of the county asking San Carlos to come to a meeting, we accepted. There is no preconditions. There has been no demands put on those discussions. It was a county supervisor, actually, two of them, requesting that officials from San Carlos take a meeting. We said, "Fine." That has been our position. This council unanimously passed a resolution, or I should say, passed an action, to state that they want us to go to those meetings. That was put into a letter, sent to the supervisors and was received. So, we are still moving forward. The wishes of the council to move forward with mediation is going forward. I know that Joan Kazman will probably have some more discussions about that. There is no actions on this item. Item 7B, report by City Attorney Rubens on Bay Conservation and Development Commission Appointment Process. Mr. Rubin. Rubens, sorry. Got an S there. Was getting so excited to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I was asked on February 14 to report on some recent issues involving the Bay, San Francisco Bay Conservation and Development Commission, also known as BCDC. Members of the audience might remember, in the 1960s, when concern started to arise about the filling of San Francisco Bay, there was a huge uproar. Many of you might remember the poster of San Francisco Bay as a slender river rather than the bay it is today. And that was part of how the BCDC was formed. BCDC's jurisdictional area, actually, I'll step back, it's a unique organization because it's a 27-member board and it comprised, it's comprised of local elected government officials, state officials, and federal officials. So, it's unique in that respect. The jurisdictional area of BCDC includes all the tidal areas of San Francisco Bay and 100 feet beyond those tidal areas of San Francisco Bay. The city of San Carlos is included in that area by way of the airport and Steinberger Slough. So, San Carlos does, in fact, touch the bay. Every, there are two, of the 27 appointees, San Carlos could potentially have a representation on two of the appointments. One is, the four regions of BCDC are selected by members of city elected bodies. And then the other is appointed by the Board of Supervisors. And there's, each seat has the main seat and an alternate. So, there's actually the potential to be on one of the regional seats and then also the county seat. Historically, the procedure for appointment has been that A-BAG, well, under the BCDC guidelines, A-BAG, the Association of Area Governments, is charged with selecting the regional seats. So, BCDC many years ago prepared a list of agencies that are within the jurisdictional area of BCDC. That list did not include three municipalities that are within the BCDC jurisdictional area. Those cities are San Carlos, Napa, and American Canyon. And you wouldn't think that Napa touches the bay, but the Napa River extends very far north, and it's actually a tidal marsh that goes north and touches the city of Napa. So, that, and then the A-BAG sends a list to, sends the notice of a vacancy to the Council of Cities, and then ultimately, A-BAG selects the members to the regional seats. Now, what brought this to my attention and to the city's attention is Councilmember Klein expressed an interest in being appointed to the BCDC when a vacancy was mentioned at a Council of Cities meeting. He was initially told that San Carlos did not, was not eligible because San Carlos did not touch the bay and wasn't within the jurisdictional area. Later on, when it was made clear that San Carlos did, in fact, touch the bay and was within the jurisdictional area after the election for the seat had occurred, but before the alternate selection had been made, Councilmember Klein was told, "We were eligible, but we were in the South Bay seat." That's also incorrect. San Carlos is in the West Bay seat. The South Bay seat extends from Redwood City south into Santa Clara County. San Carlos, then the West Bay seat extends from San Carlos to San Francisco. So, after, after that happened, oh, and at the same time, this is all in my report, but at the same time, the South Bay seat was available and San Carlos was not given the opportunity to be nominated for that seat through the A-BAG process. So, and that result is that San Carlos wasn't able to nominate or seek the nomination for the two San Mateo County seats and certainly not the seat that we were eligible for. So, I think my findings, as stated in the report, I'll just briefly summarize. A list was prepared. There's some confusion as to who prepared the list, but it was, a list was prepared. A-BAG says it was BCDC's list, and BCDC is not sure who prepared the list. But it was an old list, and it did not include the city of San Carlos and two other cities. The process by which A-BAG selects members for BCDC has, I think, could be improved by having the notices go directly to the cities rather than from BCDC, when a vacancy arises, to A-BAG, and then from A-BAG to the Council of Cities. I think a better method would be that the cities who are eligible would all be notified when a, when a seat in their, within their region becomes available. I think that would have probably led to this issue being discovered earlier because cities would have gotten these letters and San Carlos probably would have been aware that they had not received a letter. But because of the process that was employed, that didn't happen. So, if you have any other questions, I did contact, as you'll see in the report, I did contact BCDC. I did some research about the history of the commission. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Rubin.
Thank you.
We've got a unfinished business, consideration of funding and production of a city coin for official recognition from the city. Mr. Malpe, are you going to make a presentation or is there anything we need?
I can, if you'd like, Mr. Mayor.
Give him two minutes.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Jeff Malpe, City Manager. At the February 18, 2011 strategic planning retreat held over at the San Carlos Library, an objective was created, asking the mayor to present to the City Council for consideration of production of a city coin as a vehicle for preserving and enhancing the city's distinct community character. In years past, the city has had several iterations of a city key, which is a traditional token for appreciation, it's given out to members of the community or general public who, in one way or another, provide a service to the city or do something particularly special in the greater San Carlos community. That's evolved over the years into the form of a proclamation, which has been traditionally given out by the City Council, probably over the last 10 or 15 years. It's become more and more common to see these coins now given out by agencies for those types of things, when somebody from another agency comes and presents to the City Council or provides a service to the city that's outside of the norm or receives a special accolade, citizen of the year, for example. You might see other communities giving out these types of tokens, a coin. So, the council asked the mayor to look into this. We provided some information in this report that speaks to the cost of providing such a coin, approximately $2,500. As you might imagine, there's quite a wide range in terms of how much you could spend on these types of coins. We tended to look at a more simple coin towards the lower end of the cost scale. We believe we have funding available in the Administrative Services Department budget that could pay for the, could be transferred to the Council Community Promotion Budget. There's a budget currently of $13,000 balance. We've provided some examples of what a coin might look like. We've had some discussions with the Community Development Department about how this might tie in with the city's efforts to do branding and marketing. So, we certainly haven't tried to design the coin right now. If the council chooses to go forward with this, you know, we'll bring back a design in the future for you to take a look at, but we'd be interested in any feedback you might have in that area. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, as I'm sure the mayor would be as well. If there's anything you'd like to add, sir, I think this would be the time.
I will just add that this is, you know, one of the things that sort of struck this. There've been a couple of occasions where I've seen coins given. One was actually at one of my first startups, that the founders came together and threw a quarter into the jar. That was the, that was the ante. And engineers, or when somebody did something extraordinary, we actually had a quarter put into a block of lucite. And for an engineer to get a quarter was actually a real sign of honor, and you could see people with, you know, two and three quarters in their cubes. More recently, I met the guy with the coolest title on the planet, the Supreme Commander of NATO Allied Forces. If you can go around saying you're the Supreme Commander, that's a cool title. But what he would do is, he actually carried several coins in his pockets. And when, that was actually there when he met a particular sailor who did something rather extraordinary for drug interdiction. And it was an interesting point just to be able to give that coin. From my perspective, what's interesting in hearing the feedback about the coin has not been about the program or the fact that we should recognize people, but it's been about the time is wrong. One of the challenges I have is that I think so many things that we've done here in San Carlos, we have heard rather continually that the time is wrong. When it came to turf, we heard the arguments, "The time is wrong, we need to take more time." When it came to the police, we heard, "You know what? We need more time. Time's not right." We have heard plenty about timing. One of the things that we do know in this respect is that at this point in time, we are depending more on our employees and we are seeing them give back more. We are seeing volunteers step up more. And at that point, I think it is time to take a moment and say, "Thank you." To the extent of this, I believe in this program. I want this thing to continue long past the point that I would be mayor. And so, to that end, I am absolutely happy to contribute my massive, massive city stipend of 300 clams a month to help fund this production. As it is, I would consider this a program of the mayor. I'm happy to put the mayor's, put my money where my mouth is. With that, I'll entertain any other questions. Mr. Royce?
Yeah. Did you mention, you mentioned, of course, the branding effort that we have with Look. I think our mayor makes a good point, and I would like, it's his idea, I think it's a great idea, to be able to do that over the next, you know, we have six to nine months here through the end of the year here. Does that fit well within Look's time on having a design figured out by then, or do we know? Well, maybe the question is, if we don't have the design, will we wait? Is that what you're thinking? Or?
I think we'll come up with some ideas.
Something there. Yeah.
My understanding is, we may be just weeks away from some preliminary designs.
Oh, really?
And so, that could, that could inform this decision in terms of whether or not it could be a lengthy process, in which case perhaps the coin would move forward sooner, or if it's going to be relatively short, in which case we may be able to tie the two together.
Yeah. So, I can make some thoughts.
Please.
Yeah, so I would, like I said, like to support this. I think we have a lot of volunteers. It makes San Carlos special. To recognize people, there's nothing better. We never do enough of it anywhere. So, let's try to do more. And I think the cost, I think your idea, it's city council's gift. If we could share the cost, or depending how it goes, I'd like to make the same offer of a similar amount. I don't know, if we get one or two other, I'm not pressuring, I don't think we need to have all council, but we have a handful of council people that are trying to support it financially, and the city pitches in. I think it's a good effort to get it started and thanking people. So, I'm all for it.
Further discussions?
Mr. Mayor, not that I would want to be a Luddite, and I respect your, what you're trying to do here, and I think it's a good idea, but you said the word. I know a number of us on the dais have given back our stipends and our benefits. The money is not a large amount. I always have concerns with government spending money because, of course, it's in the budget. And I know that's not your point, but this movement of money, it just, it just doesn't feel right to me when we're trying to figure out such major items and some, and again, we do recognize the people that do things with a proclamation and with, you know, other publicity. It's just very, very difficult for me to support this, again, with all due respect. And I know you're coming from the right place, and I hope you respect that it's not a matter of any other reason, that I just cannot support taking public funds at this time to do something like this. And it's not the money, but can't do it for me.
Mr. Grokot?
I do have a question, and if we're discussing, I'll discuss as well. But I know Christine usually, with proclamations, there's more than a piece of paper oftentimes, or is it just a piece of paper?
To the chair, Mr. Mayor. Commission members that have served out their term receive a plaque from the city, kind of a tile plaque. And proclamations are used for other types of people or events. We issue those all the time.
So, then the question is, for me, is this coin in lieu of a plaque, like we give commissioners? Or is it in addition to? Or what are we doing here? Because right now, we, it seems to me, you know, the only thing I've ever seen recognized here are Boy Scouts getting their Eagle Scout Award and commissioners. And then when, you know, for instance, when Mr. Lewis had his last time period on the council, he was given things from, I think, senators and so forth, but he was, yeah, he was given, you know, some piece of memorabilia. So, I'm wondering, is the coin in addition to, or is it in lieu of?
It could be either. I'll tell you, I've got a proclamation here for retirement. I think in the last two weeks, I ended up recognizing Girl Scouts. There were some volunteers at another organization, I'm trying to remember which one I went to. It just feels like there's on the order of at least a handful per week that, at least as mayor, I'm going to and recognizing somebody. Proclamation does take some time, takes some time to write it up, print it up, get all that stuff together. So, to some extent, a coin might be a little bit lower than a full proclamation, which would come before this council and do something else.
So, then, we're getting stuck in the weeds here, at least I am. I guess one of the things I would like to see is, and perhaps we need a full scope policy of, you know, when do we give proclamations? When do we give whatever? Because it doesn't seem to me we have any set policy. It was mentioned, you know, we used to have ashtrays, and we used to have a key and so forth. I've never seen any actual, you know, policy statement of, "When does the city recognize whomever?" And I don't, you know, I don't, just the thought occurred to me, while I can understand your willingness to, you know, pay for this out of your own pocket, I don't totally agree with that in this sense, that there ought to be some kind of policy that if the mayor is going around town, you know, giving out coins or whatever, not to be flippant about it in the way I'm commenting here, but, you know, whoever the mayor is at the time, if they're going around town and giving out things from the city ostensibly, but in some sense, it's from them because they're funding it and they decide how to pay for it and so forth, I don't think that's correct. I think we should have a standing policy, things very clear about when we do or don't, you know, do these kind of things. And then if there's some item that we want to talk about or what we give at that time for different kinds of things, I'd be willing to look at that. for different kinds of things, I'd be willing to look at that. I'm a little bit on the same page as Mr. Grisilli in terms of cost, but I think there's other things. When I was asked about this, it made me reflect back to things I've been given as a council member, or, you know, I thought back all the way to high school, I got a little gold medal for wrestling, and I cherish that gold medal. I think you're right, you know, a coin can be a very special thing, as opposed to a plaque that's supposed to go on the wall and never gets there. But that's, and that's why I asked about, is it in lieu of, or is it in addition to? So I would like to look at, I guess what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, is I would like to look at a more full scope policy on this, and if you want to make the coin a part of that full scope policy, I'd be willing to take a look at it.
Well, I think we can take that as an action item. Mr. Klein?
I was gone when this originally was supposed to come to the council, so I got some emails and read some editorials and whatnot. You know, and at first, when I first read about it, well, when I first heard that this was coming before at the strategic retreat that we had, I was in favor of it. And then I started reading and got some emails, and it made me think a little bit about it. And it's always good when, you know, you have your mind made up, and then you go back and you're like, well, wait a minute, maybe I should really think about this a lot longer and harder. I listened to the comments about, you know, this isn't the right time, and this really isn't the right time to be spending money on stuff that isn't important. And so I looked at this and to see if it was something of importance. And it reminded me of my childhood, you know, I grew up here in San Carlos, and was had a, you know, a single mother who had to work incredibly hard to keep her kids here in San Carlos. It's hard for one person to afford a home in this town, that's for sure. And we didn't have a lot of money in middle school. You know, she would go, she loved the opera, but she would never buy opera tickets, she'd only buy standing room, and I think they were $15, because she didn't want to take that money away from her kids. But when we brought home straight A's, she always bought us something great, you know, and it was, and I knew we didn't have much money, so it meant that much more to me, because we didn't have it, that I would get something. So, you know, I'm actually more in favor of this now, looking back on it. I think we are in some pretty dire straits right now. Our citizenry is really stepping up. So if we can do something to show them how much they're appreciated, and how much it means to us as a council and to us as a city, I think all for it, $2,500 isn't that much money. I've already given back my salary, if you'd like to dedicate that to this for a year, or, you know, I mean, even if we have to, we have the $2,500, but I think this is something that we should do, and I'm happy that it was brought forward, because I think this says something, it says that we do appreciate our town, and we do appreciate the work that is being put forward, and we're going to say thank you. And it's just a little thing, 300 divided by 2,500, these things don't cost that much. But it's the sentiment behind it that matters, and so I'm all in favor of it.
Other comment from Ms. Bell?
We've also heard a lot about how broke we are. And Mr. Mayor, you were the one who sat here and said, "We're broke, we're broke, we're broke," except you waved your hands at the same time. We are broke, and this is not a good time to be spending money. When I heard you, this proposal initially, I thought it was going to be like the fire department coin, which is very special and given to very few people. But if you're going to hand out a handful a week, it's really meaningless. And to spend that kind of money on something that you're going to give hundreds of, it's a waste of public funds. It's irresponsible to spend that kind of money on something like that. Give them a sticker like the junior sheriff, or the junior firefighter, or whatever, a lot cheaper. And that's the kind of recognition you're talking about, is every Tom, Dick, and Harry. Well, this is too expensive for every Tom, Dick, and Harry. We have the proclamations, we have the plaques. I have a plaque, never been on the wall, you're right, Matt, but I treasure it, because it is in appreciation of all that I gave to a community over time. When we moved, I was recognized for the fact that I was a season ticket holder. So it's a waste of money, and it's a bad time to be wasting money.
Mr. Randall, you're warming up.
If in the event you wish to present me with something, you know, to say how well I've done, I would prefer to present, be presented with a proclamation here. I think there's more to that. You know, a coin is all very well. I have several coins. One of my best coins is from the casino in Monte Carlo. That's quite a coin. But I would still prefer to present it with a proclamation here. Thank you.
Ms. Bell, can we add that to the record?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Do the mayor make a motion here?
Please.
Yeah. So let me articulate, we don't have a formal motion here. What I, I think what we'd like to say, I'd like to make a motion to proceed with a city coin. And I think there are kind of three action steps that I heard, and I thought they were great ideas from other council members. One is that we work closely with Look Design on the logos, see if we can coordinate that. Secondly, I think Mr. Grogan made some good points that included that we do have staff kind of look at our policy, plaque versus coin, just kind of a little bit more direction on the policy. And the third point is, I've heard that approximately, it looks like between allocation and payment, that this would be funded about 50% from city council's funds of the 25. I'm considering with that amount. So those are my three assumptions in making a proposal for a city coin.
Can I just ask for a little bit of clarification, in terms of the funding, what it is that's being proposed by?
I heard two council members talk about allocation of their stipend, and I heard two council members here talk about contributing $300, which is what our monthly payment is, salary is. And it could be, you know, that could change by one plus or minus, I'm just saying approximately about 50% funded by city council.
Thank you.
Because we don't know what the costs are either, totally.
That is the motion.
Second.
Further discussion?
I appreciate Mr. Royce including my comments in his motion. However, I guess more what I was looking at was to look at the policy first, and get that hammered out. If a coin is a part of that policy, fine, maybe it wouldn't be. But get the policies hammered out first, and then either move forward or not with a coin or whatever type of recognition you want to do.
We have a motion in a second. Let's go with the roll call, please.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Right.
Councilmember Grogan?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Ahmad?
Yes. Item 9A, new business, consideration of adopting resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding for local 856 freight checkers, clerical employees, and helpers union IBT Teamsters unit. Ms. Mendonhall, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Rebecca Mendonhall, Acting Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is a two-year contract tentatively agreed to by the Teamsters unit. This unit is comprised of 16 budgeted positions, including maintenance workers and senior maintenance workers. The agreement before you tonight recommends a 5% reduction in total compensation, equating to approximately $84,900 in savings. Some of the highlights of this agreement are a 3/4% reduction in base salary, the elimination of the specialty pays, including the Class A driver's license and the qualified applicator certification, the elimination of pay-for-performance bonus program, the elimination of the vacation payout, and capping the vacation at two years, employee sharing of any future medical premium increases, the freezing of dental and vision premiums, and retirement benefit changes, including establishment of a third retirement tier, and the establishment of a VIBA or a voluntary employee benefit association program for post-employment benefits that employees can contribute money into. I'd like to extend my thanks to the employees of the Teamsters bargaining unit for working with the city to negotiate this contract. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Ms. Mendonhall, just to clarify, so this is a memorandum of understanding with the Teamsters?
Yes.
And it is a 5% reduction in their compensation?
Yes, total compensation.
And so this is partly salary, and some significant changes to benefits, is that correct?
Correct.
And we did this cooperatively with our, with our labor group, correct?
Correct.
That is wonderful. And I want to echo also to the negotiation team from the city, and to all the folks and the Teamsters, that we thank them. We appreciate the fact that they came here pragmatically and have worked with us. It's a popular sport nowadays to beat labor unions up, but the fact that they're working so well with us, and have come forward with this type of cost reduction, we appreciate that. Gentlemen, any further questions? Mr. Royce?
Just a comment to put on the list. In a couple years from now, not only Teamsters, but other groups, and by the way, I'm very satisfied with everything we've done here, and will definitely approve this. I did go, get a chance, it's always good to go through and read the entire MOU, quite lengthy. And one item kind of got my attention, and this is in the accrual of sick leave, 13.1 paragraph, and it ends by saying unused sick leave may be accrued without limit. And I really do know, there are a lot of other companies that have blended vacation or time off with sick time. I mean, there's been a lot of creative things that are done to actually manage the best for the employee and best for the employer, and also, you know, reducing costs. Because my, what really drives me, the intent of sick time is if you get sick, and you could get sick for six months, or a year. You know, we do have disability, workman's comp, and other things, so we need to look at all those other benefits and how they apply, but really try to utilize sick time for sick time, because what it's used now, what it's used for now, we just heard one employee's going to get 300 and whatever thousand dollars of accrued sick time, because it accrues forever. That drives me crazy. So let's not do it now, but put it on the list, and I think it could be a real benefit for the city if we have that discussion as we start reviewing all these. But the way it is now, it's perfect.
Further questions? Mr. Grogan?
Just one, we've been through a lot of these agreements and voted on them, so what's our timeframe for coming around to this again? Not particularly this one, but where are we?
Right. I believe June 2013.
Okay. Thank you.
Few years.
Mr. Klein?
Thank you for this, Ms. Mendonhall, and, you know, I echo the mayor's thanks to the members of the Teamsters unit. We've done, like as I mentioned, many of these this year. Is this the last full-time employees group that we have left in the city?
Yes.
Okay. So we won't be doing this anymore? For full-time employees?
Not for a year.
Yeah, for two years, okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Further questions? We entertain a motion.
I move approval of resolution number 2011.
Next in order, I don't have the number right now, sorry.
Next in order. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adopting the revised memorandum of understanding for the American Federation of...
No, this isn't right. Yeah, if I may, through the chair, there's a typo in the title of the resolution. So it should read, "With the American Local 856 Freight Checkers, Clerical Employees, and Helpers Union IBT Unit."
That's my motion.
Questions made, do I have a second?
Second.
That's number 23, sorry.
Question before the council is to approve the resolution. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grogan?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Ahmad?
Yes. Ms. Mendonhall, one further, just follow-up question. As I understand it now, all bargaining units in the city have given back. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and again, I want to take my hat off and thank especially the negotiations team, but also everybody in labor, who has worked so well and so cooperatively with the city. We appreciate their sacrifice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, for everybody who is so patient, thank you. We are now at item 10, which is a public hearing. Item 10A, consideration of an appeal of planning commission approval of a conditional use permit for a new wireless telecommunications facility, proposed by T-Mobile West Corporation at 882 Heather Drive, APNs 050-231-080, 050-354-040, pursuant to chapters 18.28, 18.118, 18.124, and 18.132 of the San Carlos Municipal Code. Hello.
Hello. Good evening. I'm good, thank you. Mr. Mayor and Council, Deborah Nelson, Planning Manager. The appeal of the Planning Commission's February 22nd use permit and architecture review is of a telecommunications facility proposed on a Cow Water site, shown in this overhead picture, which is .75 acres, it's actually two parcels, but there are three water tanks there and surrounded by single-family residential. Its address is on Heather Drive. This is, Heather is a cul-de-sac, and up toward the north, it's off Melundy Drive. This street on the right image of the picture is Sunset, and at the bottom of the picture is Nanette. The proposal at this site is also the result of about a year worth of work on T-Mobile's part to increase coverage in San Carlos, and they had initially proposed three co-located facilities on PG&E utility poles. One of those applications was withdrawn, one of the, and not resubmitted, that was on Park. Another was approved recently by the Planning Commission as a mono broadleaf tree at a Cow Water site at 142 Highland Avenue, and this is the final of the three. The request of T-Mobile is for a conditional use permit and associated architecture review, which is all of those numbers, Mr. Mayor, you read that are in our code. The facility itself is eight panel antenna on a monopole, which will look like a tree. There's two satellite dish on that pole, and also ground-mounted base transceiver station, and a new concrete block enclosure. The monopine looks something like this, and... Worked with the applicant on the quality of material, there's varying qualities, this is the best that, of their, of their materials that they propose, and the antenna are camouflaged within the leafy structure. Regarding the views in these pictures, this is the Heather Drive cul-de-sac. The site is amongst these trees on the Cow Water site. This shows a photo montage of the monopine within that grouping of trees, from a Heather Drive location. This shows from Sunset, and that would be looking back towards the west, and the monopine, if you, I'm trying to find my arrow, would be here. It's absent in this location, and the existing. And then from Nanette, this is the street below, looking up, and the water tank sites, of course, are at a promontory, which makes them very desirable to also share the telecommunications equipment, which needs line of sight for them to work appropriately. So the closest distance to a rear yard in this location is 22 feet, the setback requirement is 19 feet, and the monopine is right here with, there's vegetation in front of it from this location. Neighbors in the vicinity have appealed this, the Planning Commission's February 22nd decision, and the appeal has three bases of concern. There were 21 specific items, those are in your staff reports, but generally, they fell into three categories. That the proposal conflicts with the general plan, it impacts views, it poses a risk to the community's safety, it will depress property values, and has significant residential opposition. Secondly, the new location is not necessary, and local residents had conducted their own tests and believe that, they have shown that T-Mobile has adequate service. And then thirdly, that after the deliberation, it is the, the Planning Commission standard to close the public hearing, have discussion, then ask questions. And so included in the appeal, the neighbors have indicated that their Planning Commission has made some assumptions that weren't necessarily correct. that weren't necessarily correct. So let me just go through these a little more in more detail. Regarding point number one, the appellate states that the proposal conflicts with the general plan and impacts views. The planning staff worked closely with the applicant to ensure that the proposed monopine would be state-of-the-art and as realistic as possible. We requested that it have additional branches and a simulated trunk bark that looks more realistic, and that the antenna be masked within the leafy material as much as possible. Regarding safety, the applicant submitted structural design reports and details that various technical elements of the installation, also the California Building Code, requires that the structure withstand external forces, ensuring its safety. There was also an RF study, this is required with the application, and I'll get into it a little bit later, but we had a peer review conducted where the city had asked for that peer review. It shows that regarding radio frequencies, that this facility is well below the federal standards. It's the federal government that controls this factor, not the city. And then regarding property values, the way the Planning Commission considers that is in the context of our general plan and our zoning ordinance, which have many policies and requirements for activities that occur in residential areas. Regarding appeal point two, the residents submitted evidence that the new location is not necessary. The Planning Commission found that there was a coverage gap for the area that T-Mobile is proposing to cover that gap, and the city's third-party consultant reviewed not only the T-Mobile proposal, but two alternative sites that T-Mobile looked at, one at the Trinity Church and one at Highlands Park, and the coverage could not be achieved. The peer review, a little more of this, that consultants concluded that T-Mobile's need was justified based on site objectives and coverage gaps, including on-air status of Heather School site. This proposal for Heather School that was approved some months ago, it was not what's referred to as on-air at the time that the first coverage data was submitted. The RCC consultants have reviewed that information again with Heather School onsite, and I'll show you some images in a second. And they've concluded that the proposed design, and that in the field, design is not used as aesthetics as we use it in our zoning ordinance and general plan, but really the number of antenna, the height of the pole, and the location of the pole, that it's reasonable and consistent with industry standards. That neither the Trinity Church site or the Highlands Park site could meet coverage objectives, and as I mentioned, that the radio frequency standards were well below what's required. So there are many questions about the Heather School site. This is the graphic, and I know the T-Mobile team has some also, which shows predictive data that they do by modeling. The Heather School site is this dot. So on-air, it has coverage in the green, the yellow, and less so in the gray area. The little dots along the street is actually drive test data, so they look at these two together. They do a prediction, and then they go out, and then they drive test. So that's the Heather School. The site that is proposed is here at 882 Highlands, and when they looked again at the coverage for both, you see this, it looks blue in this image, but it's the same green color, that the coverage extends well beyond Britain. And so the RCC has concluded that T-Mobile has shown that they have a coverage need, and that the coverage need can be met by the additional facility. Regarding appeal point number three, the appellate state that the Planning Commission had made various assumptions after closing the public comment portion of the hearing, and this included the method in which residents tested the coverage along with the type of devices used and the type of data collecting. Specifically, the residents used several different types of phones, primarily tested phone reception, not data capability and email and internet capability. But the Planning Commission had rigorous and lively debate over four hearings on this, and they haven't concluded that they had sufficient information to make the findings to approve this facility. So the recommendation is that the Planning Commission deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's decision for a conditional use permit and architecture review for a new wireless antenna facility for T-Mobile West at 882 Heather. And because this is a de novo hearing, and you start again, you would also adopt the findings and the code compliance certificate, which are included in attachment in one of your staff report. You also have on your dais a letter from T-Mobile's counsel, which came in today, and the T-Mobile's team is in the audience on this side of the room, and quite a number of folks representing the appellate's team is also in the audience. That concludes my report, unless you have any specific questions.
Let me, Mr. Rubens, are there any opening statements you'd like to make regarding how the public hearing is to be conducted or ex parte communications?
Well, as stated by Ms. Nelson, this is a de novo hearing, so the decision of the Planning Commission does not act as precedent for you. The record that you have is what the Planning Commission considered in addition to what you consider tonight. Secondly, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, which is a simpler way of saying that is that you're making a decision on an application and weighing evidence on this. So one of the general rules on quasi-judicial matters is that we want to have a, we want to be clear what the record is and what you're basing your decisions on. That could be contacts from the public, it could be documents that you've received, it could be things of that nature. If they're part of your decision-making process, you should disclose those and disclose those contacts. This is different than a legislative process. Legislative process is where you're enacting a new law or ordinance, and in that case, the issue of bias is not as strong a concern, because policy decisions, people are entitled to have their biases. But in a quasi-judicial proceeding, bias is an important issue, and cases have held that if contacts are not disclosed, and those contacts could raise the inference of a bias, and which would potentially in turn raise the issue of due process rights of an applicant, you need to disclose those types of contacts if they're part of your decision again.
Before we go to questions, then, as mayor, I will disclose as part of my contacts that I did receive this letter electronically on Friday, and have also had a very short email exchange with Mark Weinberger prior to the appeal being filed, and it was related to the fact that he wanted to file the appeal. I'll look at my colleagues on the dais if they wish to make any further disclosures.
Mr. Mayor, I received the same email you're discussing, and that's it.
I think the entire council received this on Friday, so...
Right. I received that email. I also received another email from a representative of T-Mobile, asking if I wanted to take a tour of the site. I did not respond to that email, nor did I have any discussion with anyone about it.
Anything else? Sounds like...
Just Bob.
Perfect. Oh, you did receive a contact from T-Mobile?
That's it.
You said the same as Bob?
Yeah, same as Bob. I received a phone call on our council voicemail and an email, and I didn't respond either.
Perfect. With that ex parte out of the way, are there any specific questions from Ms. Nelson at this point? Very good. So here's what I'd like to do for a little bit of housekeeping. I have, first of all, this is an appeal, this is a public hearing, so we'd like to make certain that everybody is going to be heard. I will be a little bit more lenient on the time. What I have is a speaker slip labeled "Applicant" with a total of, let me ask people to raise their hands.
Appellant.
No, applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Go ahead.
Masako Hill, thank you. Paul Allbritton. Amir Karbam, thank you. James Christ. And Mark Newman. Perfect. Is that the entirety of your team?
Only two of us. The others are...
Perfect. Thank you. On the appellate side, I have Mr. Weinberger. Thank you. I have Ally Gordon.
Al.
Al, sorry. Okay. Margaret Warren. Thank you. Are there, and I assume everybody there would like to, you're here to lend support. Let me ask, because I would like to offer Mr. Weinberger an opportunity to get time yielded. So what I'm willing to do is, I will consider the applicant as five people. I will give three minutes per person. As a result of that, it is 15 minutes that I will yield to them. For the folks who are doing the appeal, what I will ask you to do, if you don't want to speak, that's fine, but I will ask for some speaker cards, and it is appropriate for you to say that you would yield your time to Mark. If I can get three more cards, then, please just fill them out, then I will ye... Whoa. Okay. Just need three. Then we will yield 15 minutes to Mr. Weinberger.
I'm sorry. I'm not sure all those people are...
If they yield time, that's fine.
They may want to...
At this point, we're just doing the yield.
Couldn't make this any more complicated.
So, I will start with the applicant, and who is going to be taking the applicant's discussion.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmen. My name is Masako Hill. I represent T-Mobile West Corporation located at 1855 Gateway Boulevard in Concord, California. I'm here tonight to request that you deny the appeal application and uphold the use permit approval by the Planning Commission. I'm joined here tonight by Paul Allbritton, T-Mobile's legal counsel, Amr Karaba, T-Mobile's RF engineer, James Christ, T-Mobile's construction manager, and Mark Newman, representing Hammonton Edison, who can answer any questions regarding the noise report and RF study. I want to thank planning staff for their work on this project for the past year and for the staff report. I'll be brief. I just want to make three important points before yielding to Mr. Allbritton. T-Mobile operates a nationwide wireless digital communications network. Phone, data, and internet are some of the services provided to customers. In order to operate a network that offers clear and consistent signal access, new antenna facilities are located in specific geographic regions. The facilities are called cell sites, and each of them work together to provide seamless network service. One in four households, about 24.5 percent, does not have a landline, but does have at least one wireless phone. One of the most important uses of the network is emergency services. The ability to initiate a clear and uninterrupted call is very important for emergency service situations. The more information you can provide the 911 operator, the greater the chance of optimal service. Most operators are able to provide emergency first aid service over the phone to callers. Merely initiating a 911 call, having the call drop, and relying on GPS information to have emergency services locate the person is not the service T-Mobile wants to provide to its customers. I just want to briefly go over the three alternate sites. There's actually three sites that were looked at in this range. The first application was submitted to the Planning Commission in 2009. It was a utility pole on Sunset Drive. This project, this design was not supported by planning staff and the Planning Commission, and we then looked at the water tank site. The other alternate site was the Highlands Park site, which does not meet the coverage objective, and also is now redundant in lieu of the Heather Elementary School site being on air. And then the Trinity Presbyterian Church site, which is located at a lower elevation, will not provide coverage, and also, we were not able to get a lease agreement with the And I just wanted to touch upon line of sight technology. RF signals need line of sight in order to provide coverage. Trees can block or degrade signal. Shadowing occurs when the RF signal does not reach an area of lower elevation. So a site may look over a hillside, but if elevation drops rapidly, the signal is not able to reach this area, and it's called shadowing. These are types of line of sight that work well on hillsides, when it's located at a high elevation, able to get the signal down the hill, and then at level elevation, the signal is able to look at both directions and get a clear signal access. I just want to also go over this. The drive test data measures real-time signal RF coverage levels. So the gray, black, and yellow areas are coverages of poor, on-street, and in-vehicle. The goal of this area is to have the signal level at green, which provides optimal in-building coverage and consistent signal. I'm going to yield to Paul Allbritton, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Masako. Paul Allbritton, outside counsel for T-Mobile. I'm glad you all received my letter and my email. Sorry it was not sooner, that you didn't have more time to look at it. You have an extremely thorough record. You had four planning commission hearings going on to review this entire application. I want to briefly touch on the federal law as it applies to your decision. I think the federal law actually helps you tonight. As you know, the Telecom Act says that, I'm going to cover three areas. First, environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, substantial evidence, and then prohibition of service. So quickly, I'm sure you all know that councils can't deny sites based on the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, so long as the site falls within the FCC guidelines. And in this case, Hammonton Edison, Mark's firm, did a study that showed that anywhere on the ground adjacent to the site were 200 times below the federal standard, so the site, in terms of EMF, is safe. What you may not know is that since the Act in 1996, there have been many cases, and the allegation that sites affected property values has come up several times. And in 2003, ATT versus Carlsbad, the federal court said that any allegation that sites reduce property values is really a proxy for environmental concerns and health concerns. And so denial on the base of property values is equivalent to denial on EMF concerns, and so that is not seen as a means for denial of sites or something that's allowed to local jurisdictions. Substantial evidence, the other problem with the Telecom Act is you have to, the council must have substantial evidence to deny a site. That's more than a scintilla, but less than a preponderance of evidence. It means you have to have not just, that you have not have general objections, but specific evidence for objection to a site. Scenic view blockage, blockage of views from rights of way, not general objections regarding aesthetic concerns. In this case, the T-Mobile has provided an enormous amount of substantial evidence to approve this site. You can see from all the studies that have been provided through the four planning commission hearings, there are engineering studies, soil studies, third-party engineering studies that you yourselves commissioned, supplemental studies after sites were turned on by T-Mobile, and enormous body of substantial evidence for approval. On the other hand, the appellate's have provided evidence, but not the kind of evidence that's considered reliable or substantial by federal courts. In particular, they talk about anecdotal phone calls, where they try and show that T-Mobile service works. There's a federal court case, San Francisco, MetroPCS versus San Francisco, a 2006 case, where anecdotal phone evidence was introduced, and the federal court said that the drive test data, the coverage maps that were introduced by, in that case, MetroPCS, were reliable, scientifically reliable evidence, but that the anecdotal phone calls, in this case, it was the city's expert that was doing these phone calls, Jonathan Kramer had Mr. was the city's expert that was doing these phone calls, Jonathan Kramer, had Mr. Nelson calling it from various parts of the city to show that the network works. It's a very complicated science, and we can get into more of why your expert would say there is a gap, where in certain locations, in the gap area, phones work. But in this case, your third-party engineer has confirmed it, and I think it's established in terms of substantial evidence that there is a gap in service. There are other issues raised by the appellants regarding signal strength and other evidence that's introduced that, again, doesn't rise to the substantial evidence that's required for denial of a site. Finally, I want to get on, excuse me, to prohibition of service. There've been two recent cases, the Anacortes case in 2009, T-Mobile versus Anacortes, and then recently, Agora Hills case, T-Mobile versus Agora Hills, where if a carrier can show there's a significant gap in coverage, as we have here through your third-party engineer, and we can show that the facility we're proposing is the least intrusive means for filling that gap, then we have met our prima facie case to show that if you deny the site, it essentially is a prohibition of service. Significant gap, least intrusive means of filling that gap, even if you have substantial evidence to deny the site for aesthetics. And in this case, significant gap identified by your third-party engineer, and in terms of least intrusive means, we've done an alternatives analysis. In fact, T-Mobile has spent two years going from their initial proposal of a utility pole to looking at different sites, and finally coming up with this tree pole, working with staff, coming up with bark designs, branch counts, color, and so forth, to come up with a design which we think fits into a location that's already, has water tanks on it, it's a utility location in the middle of a residential zone. So just to recap, I think in this case, environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, property values, falls into that category and is not a means for denial. Substantial evidence, T-Mobile has provided a huge body of analyses to confirm that the facility is safe and fits all of your codes in terms of aesthetics, setbacks, heights, and everything that it's supposed to. In terms of prohibition of service, we've established a significant gap, and that this is the least intrusive means of filling that gap. T-Mobile, of course, is in the business of providing excellent wireless service and not of upsetting your communities. We understand that it's very difficult to place public-serving infrastructure in residential areas, but the way wireless has exploded, the revolution, the joining of the cellphone and the internet, this is the kind of service that the customers need and is really moving the city forward. We'd like to reserve two minutes for rebuttal, if we could, after appellants and all have spoken, to answer any follow-up questions you may have that come from the appellants. And with that, we would take any questions you have.
We'll hold questions till after all hearing, and you do have time remaining. So, we will go, Mr. Weinberger. Come on up, and let's just go through this. Mary, I'm sorry, I'm going to mess up your name. Thank you. You are yielding time. And James, you two are yielding time. Mr. Gordon, are you yielding time? And Ms. Warren.
I will speak.
You will speak. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, fine. Great, great, great.
That's perfect.
Thank you. You have handouts?
Yes.
Okay.
A copy of my presentation and a copy of my paper.
Okay.
Sorry, there's only one of those. But these are copies.
Okay.
There's only one copy of my paper.
Okay. We're going to hear it anyway. Hold on just one moment.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. These are the ones.
We're all yields.
He's just handed me these.
The ones you handed were yields, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And I'll write yield on it.
All right, thank you.
Only one of them doesn't have it on.
Thanks again for allowing.
All right, so, Mr. Weinberger, at this point, we'll recognize you for 15 minutes.
Okay, I promised not to use it all, so.
Terrific. Good evening, please go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Mark Weinberger. Let me launch my, launch.
Why don't you go ahead and get your presentation up?
I don't read well here.
All right.
All right, anytime.
Thank you. My name is Mark Weinberger, 11879 Heather Drive. Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. We are here tonight to appeal the decision by the Planning Commission to approve the permit to build a cell tower at 8A2 Heather Drive. Well, I'd like to start first by saying that I am a senior software engineer, and my company provides data synchronization applications for mobile devices. So I'm very much pro-technology and certainly pro-wireless infrastructure, but only if it is provided in a way that is responsible to the residents of the community. During this process, the residents have provided substantial evidence showing that this tower is not necessary and would do more harm than good. Because of this, there is unanimous opposition to this proposal from the residents, and we do not understand why the Planning Commission continues to be an advocate for it. We hope the city council will reconsider this decision. In my presentation tonight, I would like to summarize our reasons why this proposed tower is not consistent with many elements of the general plan. We have shown this tower will be highly visible and not blend in with the surroundings and significantly impact views of the bay. There will be a safety hazard and make our neighborhood less attractive. We have shown that this is not driven by resident demand, and have submitted to you tonight a petition to that effect. Even existing T-Mobile customers in this area have signed it and are switching their services to other providers in response to this proposal. And we have shown that this tower will be detrimental to the character of this quiet residential neighborhood, and we have shown that the residents already enjoy an excellent level of service from T-Mobile. In addition, tonight, I will explain how the highly variable terrain of this area makes T-Mobile's objective impossible to meet and will prevent the proposed tower from being effective. And finally, I will show that alternatives do exist, which are acceptable to the residents and more consistent with the general plan. First of all, to show the visual impact this tower will have, the residents floated a set of balloons which are a total of 50 feet in height. The balloons were anchored to the ground as close to the proposed location as possible. The resulting photos clearly show the tower will be highly visible and impact the views of the bay from above. In addition, at a height of 50 feet, this tower will be more than 50 percent taller than any of the surroundings. This will make it impossible to blend in and also will not meet the new aesthetic guidelines just approved by the city, requiring the tower to be within scale, to scale with the surroundings. The picture you see before you was taken from the rear door of one of the neighboring houses above. This picture is her view, and you can clearly see that the tower will significantly impede it. Note also, though, it was a little breezy at this time, so the balloon is leaning to the right, and it's actually a lot taller than it should be. You can see the lean. But I think you get the idea. I would also like to point out that the plans submitted to the city call for a trench to be dug along the line of trees, requiring their removal. This point was raised at the very initial hearing of the Planning Commission, but even so, when the site was later staked out, you can clearly see that two of the trees will need to be removed. These trees are the two tallest, are large enough to be classified as heritage trees, and obviously removing them will make it impossible for the tower to blend in. This tower is not without risk. Cellular communication towers have inherent safety concerns that make them unsuitable for siding next to residential homes. First, these towers can and do catch on fire from mistakes made during regular maintenance, faulty wiring, or lightning strikes. We have previously submitted a number of articles to the city describing incidents where this has occurred, which include the pictures and headlines that you see before In addition, these towers are also susceptible to collapse during storms or high winds, such as those common in the San Carlos Hills. In this slide, we provide two examples of this. The first is a tower that collapsed at a fire station in New York, crushing the fire chief's car. It was very fortunate that no one was harmed in this incident. The second example occurred just last month, where a T-Mobile tower in New Jersey collapsed in high winds, despite T-Mobile's claims that this has never occurred. However small the chances of these events occurring may be, it can and does happen. We have shown that there are two homes inside the fall zone of the proposed tower, and we ask that the city require T-Mobile to find a better location, even if it is less desirable for them. It is not worth putting the residents and our homes in danger. As for neighborhood character, the Planning Commission contends that the character of the neighborhood will be preserved simply because the noise level will be within legal limits. But this is not the only quality that defines a neighborhood. This is a quiet cul-de-sac, and the addition of noisy commercial industrial structures there will forever degrade its qualities. As a measure of this, we have submitted studies and testimonials showing that a tower will result in upwards of a 20 percent loss in home value. Also, homes inside the fall zone are disqualified from obtaining FHA-backed loans, resulting in a substantial impact in property value. And this tower has already had its effect. Residents are considering moving away, and I personally know of two young families which wanted to move here but are now looking elsewhere because this tower was approved. This neighborhood was once a highly desirable location to live, and this is quickly being I would like to turn your attention now to the tests that the residents conducted. We asked 55 residents to make calls using T-Mobile phones from inside their homes. These tests were conducted over several days, at times when residents were likely to be home. Signal quality was also recorded, and in all cases, we found there to be excellent 3G signal strength inside. Now, I should point out that this is exactly the same as their drive test data. We're measuring signal strength, and so are they. During our testing, we had a 100 percent success rate without a single dropped call or poor quality. We also located four current T-Mobile customers in this area, and not a single one of them have complaints. Two of these residents have been T-Mobile customers for over 10 years and testified to the Planning Commission about their high level of service. So there can be no disputing that residents can reliably make calls from inside their homes now, and there is a clear record of consistently good coverage over extended periods of time. Finally, we provided recent court decisions which show that the level of service that is present today meets any legal standard, and that small regions of lower signal strength does not equate to a significant gap in coverage. Here's a map showing the locations of homes that were tested, with the locations of existing T-Mobile customers marked, the ones with a dot. The entire hillside is shown to have excellent service from inside of homes, including those which are claimed to have weaker coverage from the drive test data. So how can this be? According to T-Mobile, users should not be able to make calls in this area at all, and I believe that there are several reasons for this. First, we have provided a white paper from independent experts, which explain that the coverage levels from carriers are vastly too conservative. This paper cites academic studies showing that a minus 84 dBm signal strength, which is the yellow color on their propagation maps, not the green, is more than sufficient for most homes, and our data bears this out. The homes here are modest wood frame houses, and they all receive a high level of service inside. In addition, the terrain in this area is extremely steep and variable, shown by the picture in the slide. Here, the road is shielded, yet the homes above have excellent coverage. In these areas, you can and should expect the signal level at the road to be less than the homes above. This has proven to be the case by our in-home tests, and requiring otherwise would be unreasonable. This next slide shows some homes along Alameda and Britton avenues. The road and homes here are clearly shielded from above, there is more line of sight to the proposed tower location, meaning there will be no benefit. Only a tower at an alternate site will improve the level of signal at these locations. Finally, I would like to turn your attention to the coverage plot data that T-Mobile has provided. This data is held up as proof that the proposed site will have benefit, and yet twice previously, their plots have been off the mark. But I think the reason for this is clear from the previous photos. The highly variable terrain makes these plots unreliable predictors of the signal strength on the roads in this area. Yet most homes here were built to provide clear views of the bay, and thus will get better coverage than the road tests will show. In other words, the drive test data need only show adequate in-vehicle coverage, because the homes above are better off. At the end of the day, we need to ask ourselves what the problem is that we are trying to solve. If we are looking for the ability to reliably make phone calls from inside of homes, then it is clear that this goal is already met, which the existing T-Mobile customers in this area can and have attested to. But if the objective is to have perfect coverage at street level everywhere, then it is equally clear that this is unrealistic. And thus, due to the extremely variable terrain, a tower above will not provide the answer to the areas being identified as problematic. Please consider that this tower will result in very high costs to the residents. In order to justify this cost, there needs to be a very high bar of proven need. We feel we have demonstrated that this bar has not been met. Finally, I want to provide some alternatives to the proposal. From T-Mobile's own data, a location at the corner of Britton and Alameda would provide enhanced coverage to those areas identified as having weaker signal, which I should point out are along Britton and Alameda and one portion in the interior. This location is a busy intersection with large structure, with the homes setback or shielded from the road. The utility pole here is badly bent, as you can see, and needs replacing anyway, and there is a large median there with two very tall palm trees where another fake tree could go. Using these alternatives would not block views, nor put homes at risk, and would better blend in with the surroundings. In addition, just one block away on Alameda, as you can see, there is a stretch of road with very few homes and a series of light poles which also need replacing. This, again, would be a much better location. I don't know if you can tell, but the one where the arrow is pointed is badly leaning. This next slide shows an existing installation in Palo Alto, which should serve as a model for what we feel is acceptable. Now, I understand that these alternatives may not be the number-one choice for T-Mobile, but it is admittedly the city's position to force residents into paying the price for these towers with no concessions in return. The city must push T-Mobile to accept less in order to protect the wishes and interests of its citizens. In conclusion, the residents of this community are unanimously opposed to this proposal. Not one single resident has come out in favor of it. The level of benefit to the community is questionable at best, and we have shown that it will incur substantial harm. We therefore strongly urge the council to take a stand in favor of the residents and overturn the decision by the Planning Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gentleman yields balance of his time. Ms. Warren. Ms. Warren will be recognized for three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I am here to strongly oppose the decision of the Planning Commission to allow T-Mobile to erect a monopine antenna tower on the California Water Service property, entirely surrounded by homes, and to request the city council overturn that decision and deny the T-Mobile application. You'll have to forgive me, I'm normally, I speak extemporaneously, but because of time limitations, I'm relying on the written word. I find it interesting that the only photos shown by T-Mobile in their presentation were from below, and it did not address the views from above. And if you take a look at those two photos, that's a view from my home. I'm above that property. And if you take a look at that photo on the right, you will see an enormous drawn-in, to the same degree that the balloons were floating, monopine. And you tell me how that blends with the surrounding trees that don't show. Not at all. It is very convenient that all the photos were taken going uphill from a degree that advantaged T-Mobile. While I recognize T-Mobile's desire to increase its market share of today's mobile electronic devices, it should not be at the expense of the residents in the city of good living. There are plenty of existing utility poles upon which T-Mobile could install relatively small boxes to accomplish whatever need they seem to perceive they have. Having this unneeded, enormous plastic and metal projection erected in the middle of a residential neighborhood, blocking view lines of many homes when there are other viable alternatives, is unconscionable. As I read federal law, the TCA, it does not preclude denial based on incompatible use. It only addresses the fact that you cannot address safety issues as in RF concerns, people being worried about radio waves. No residents worried about the radio waves. That's not the point. It has already been demonstrated that T-Mobile doesn't really need this oversized tower. Theories that they might need it for something in the future do not seem to be appropriate for this application, and it seems to me that they continue to massage their data and computer models to make it appear that there are significant gaps in coverage and that the tower is needed, despite graphic evidence to the contrary. T-Mobile has less objectionable alternatives. The city of good living should insist that T-Mobile take the least intrusive option in a long-established and fully-built-out R1 neighborhood. Having spent 10 years as a planning commissioner, two as chair, in another peninsula city, I am well aware of the need to balance business and residential interests. This approval does not represent good planning and may well lead to a dangerous precedent. How will the city respond when a resident, perhaps even me, with my big hill behind me, decides that they wish to earn extra money by allowing every cellular company to improve their coverage by erecting monopines in their backyard? I urge the council to overturn the Planning Commission decision and deny this application. I urge the council to overturn the planning commission decision and deny this application. It's bad planning. Thank you.
Speaker's time has expired. Are there further comments from folks who have not yielded time? T-Mobile had just a few minutes left, but I will provide three minutes of what they had left.
Thank you. Paul Alberton again. I guess I just need to reemphasize what we said before, and your expert is here from RCC Consulting, who reviewed the drive test data, reviewed the maps, and confirmed that there's a significant gap in T-Mobile data. So I think if you have questions about that, you should ask your expert, because you probably believe him more than you believe me. But, again, the data that's provided by the appellants is not the kind of information that the T-Mobile RF engineers use to design their network. There is clearly a topographic shelf that creates a void of service in this area, and T-Mobile is trying to fill that. They have a user frequency, 2.1 gigahertz for their 3G service, which travels a very short distance, and that's why you see more T-Mobile facilities than you would say see for a Verizon facility. They're just different technologies in there. I can go into expand upon any of that if you wish. The FCC, however, the FCC sold these frequencies to T-Mobile, and they're the ones who are in charge of what signal strengths may or may not be required. And if each local jurisdiction, as this gentleman suggests, were to set a signal strength requirement of negative 85 or negative 95 or whatever it was, then phones may work in San Carlos, but not in San Jose, or in Oakland, but not in San Francisco. And that's why this is covered, it's controlled by the federal government, and that's why they determine, make the rules regarding RF frequency strength and signal strength, and there is no specific standard. It varies depending on the frequency and use, and the topography, and the way that the different carriers build out their different systems. In terms of the top five feet of the pole is merely foliage. It's fake. It's a 45-foot pole. There is no house in the fall zone. If you look at some of the studies that were done, as I quote in my letter, "The foundation itself is 20,000 pounds." It's an enormous foundation. It has 15 six-foot bolts that are two inches in diameter that mount the pole to the cement foundation. The trees are going to fall down before the pole is anywhere near to falling down. So all of these issues, of course, that's covered by the building code, as your planning director mentioned. All of these issues, I think, have been fully addressed in the record. We're happy to answer any questions that you have. T-Mobile is certainly, as I said, building out a network to serve its clients going into the third generation and beyond. The mobile phone has moved into a complete new area with iPads and iPhones and the services, the internet services that are provided, and T-Mobile is trying to fill that requirement because their network requires this site and because of the way it's been built out. It's taken two years for them to get to this location. The federal law says it has to be the least intrusive means, but not the only means. We don't have to look at every site if it's going to have an equivalent effect on the community. And through working with the planning department over the last two years, they've identified the least intrusive means for filling this significant gap. We're available for any questions.
The gentleman's time has expired. Would entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Gentlemen, now it's time to discuss this.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions for staff, perhaps. Is that okay?
Mr. Lee, please go ahead.
Ms. Nelson? It was indicated by the appellant that the pole, they were showing some pictures of falling poles. If this pole falls, does it hit a house?
My understanding, well, I don't know that measurement. I know that it is 22 feet to the rear property line.
I heard you before it was 22 feet, but I just asked you if it's going to hit a house.
What I know is that the staff report, it reports the nearest house is 120 feet. I don't know that there's one closer. I believe that the appellants have evidence that there is one closer than that.
Okay. The appellant also indicated some trees are going to be removed. Is that true?
I think I would have to ask the applicant that as well.
I can ask the applicant that?
Yeah, because that was not reported to us previously. The conditions of approval, though, indicate that they are responsible to replace any trees from here into perpetuity as long as they have a lease at that site.
Right. Of course, the tree that they replace isn't going to be possibly quite as high as the one they knocked down, possibly. Could I ask the applicant that question, please? If they have the answer.
I do. No trees will be removed.
No trees?
No trees.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Nelson, I'm sorry. One more. I apologize bouncing you up and down. They mentioned a couple of alternative sites. One of the sites was mentioned was near the Trinity Church, let's say, possibly in the median where the two, or where the palm trees are. Does the city have any poles on its own property? Because I assume that's city property, the median.
Yes, we do, in Burton Park and in Highland Park.
Okay.
And the ordinance you just approved, which extended this to the public rights of way in public places, establishes the procedure that they would come to you, which would be all of the same conditions of approval analysis plus a lease.
Right.
So that median, they could ask you for a lease.
We could ask them for a lease.
Right, right.
We could ask them for a lease. Why wouldn't we want to do that? They felt that site wasn't as good as the one they have?
That wasn't one that was proposed to us. What they purported on the Trinity Presbyterian Church was that it doesn't, even if they could get a lease with the church, it wouldn't have as much coverage. They've never given us evidence about...
The answer is, is that the coverage is better where they're putting it, not because they couldn't get a lease with the Trinity Church. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. We can't do this. You have to come up. Thank you.
The coverage at the Trinity Church location will not provide the needed coverage, and also, we could not get a lease.
I understand you couldn't get a lease, but I'm just asking about the coverage.
No, the coverage is not adequate.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Dad. There's a coverage map in the record from the Trinity Church that was reviewed by your third-party engineer, showing that the coverage is significant. It's about 200 feet below the elevation.
Just thought I'd ask, because what I heard was you couldn't get a lease, and I thought that might be the predominant reason. Obviously, you say it isn't, okay? Those are the only questions I have right now. Thank you.
I apologize. I did not introduce Dieter Breiser of RCC, and he's in the second row there and could answer specific technical questions.
I wish I had some technical questions, but I think Mr. Ahmad will probably be our expert on that. Excuse me.
Mr. Grokot?
So I had a question. One of my questions has to do with the significant gap, because just like trees being removed or not being removed, I'm getting two different stories here. So I would like to see Mark's map again on the overhead, and I would like to see, I guess it's Dieter's map. Where's the gap? You know, I'd like to see the gap. What we got in our packet is in black and white, and it's not very easily studied. So I want to see both of them.
Why don't you go back to yours first, Mark, and then we'll...
Here's our map.
Okay. And this is the area that everybody agrees upon that we're trying to cover, right? What's shown here? Basically, from Britton, Alameda, that quadrant, where all these little icons are shown.
So if I take this opportunity just to comment a little bit on this map, there are no homes along this stretch of road. They're all, this is a dead end, and this is a very deep depression here, and this area is all elevated above the road. So that's why you don't see any dots here.
That's the upside of Britton right there, right?
That's correct. So the church is here, and the areas that they've identified as weak are here, here, and here.
Those are the areas that they indicate are a gap? Can you do that again?
If you look at their propagation maps, the drive test data, I'm sorry. It is here, along Alameda and along Britton, and our...
Let's take a look at their map.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sure.
I mean, your map shows green. Great. Let's see their map.
Oh, yours.
Now, the icons on this map, I have no idea what's going on here, because, again, what we had in our thing...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Dieter Breiser. I'm with RCC Consultants. RCC has been engaged by the city of San Carlos to provide an independent review of the applicant's documents that were submitted. And a little bit about RCC, we're a telecommunications consulting firm, primarily working with public safety agencies, cities, counties, and state governments. We have offices in five locations throughout the United States, and we've been in business for about 25 years, and we've performed similar reviews for many other cities and also in this particular area. So the methodology that we deployed was, we reviewed the applicant's materials, analyzed it against industry standard practices, including the design drawings, the coverage plots that you've seen, the actual drive test data that was provided by T-Mobile. We've looked at the alternative sites, the Highland Park location and the Trinity Presbyterian Church, and also looked at the staff report, going back to October 27th. And based on that, we issued a report. And then, I think it was last month, we were asked to also review some additional data that was provided, and specifically, it was the drive test data that showed the effect of the Heather Elementary School site, excuse me. So what you're looking at here on this map is the actual, previous maps were shown based on model data only. So in other words, these are computer models that wireless carriers utilize to do their designs. The computer models are fairly accurate, however, they're constantly being refined to reflect real-world conditions. So the ultimate test, though, is an actual drive test where specific equipment is taken out, it's calibrated, and nobody's running around with just cell phones and looking at the bars. That is not an accurate indication of signal by any means.
What is?
It's specific...
If he uses a cellphone, what do he use?
The specific test equipment that is made for that purpose. It's computer-driven, it uses GPS, and makes specific coverage measurements. Now, the wireless carriers, as was mentioned, their main target is to improve in-building coverage. Why? Because many calls are initiated from within homes. People are getting away from wireline phones quite a bit, so it's really, that is the primary design target. So typically, there are three bands of signal strengths that wireless carriers work with: the in-building, the in-vehicle, and then the on-street. But again, the main thrust is to get that in-building signal, and that basically means an extra margin of signal to penetrate building walls and so forth. And the designs are done based on a network basis. They're not done necessarily based on a particular neighborhood, specifically when it goes, when it comes to setting design targets as far as signal levels. These are standard industry practices, and this is essentially what wireless carriers do. So, anyway, this demonstrates the results of a drive test. It shows the levels I've just mentioned. Green is in-building coverage, yellow, in-vehicle coverage, and the shaded areas on-street, and then the black area is poor coverage. So with the, the important thing to note is, with the Heather Elementary School site active, and we look just to the east, the signal level already becomes very unreliable as far as in-home coverage along Hewitt Drive. There are some smatterings of in-vehicle coverage going there on, I believe it's Nanette, that comes off of Hewitt Drive. And then, you see little spots here of green, which does represent in-building coverage. But, you know, the point is that this really does reflect that the Heather Elementary School signal does not meet the carrier's stated design objective to cover that area. And it is true that the Heather Elementary School signal does partially improve the signal in their stated target area, but it is not sufficient based on industry standard practices.
Did you?
Do you want to push your question a little further?
I don't know how else I would ask it. I'm getting two sets of data here, and you're saying one's empirical, but on the other hand, if what you're saying is true, you ought to have T-Mobile customers saying, hey, you know, do something, because I'm not getting coverage at my house. And then, we're getting information from, you know, people here who say, we're talking to existing customers, there's no complaints, no one's saying they're getting dropped calls, or they can't call from their home, or their 3G phone doesn't work. But you're saying you've got these gaps. I'm getting, please understand me, I'm getting two different messages. I'm getting probably the scientist's message, and then I'm getting what's called empirical, which I'm told I'm not allowed to rely on, but, hey, these people vote for us, you know? I was put on the council to represent them, not you, and not you, okay? So that's how I'm looking at this, all right? And I'm getting two sets of data here. One, again, I'm told I'm not supposed to rely on, but, hey. So please explain to me why you show gaps and we don't have any customers, i.e. residents who have T-Mobile service, saying, I got a gap, fix it.
I was not presented anything for review that showed the citizen's method of testing. I'd be more than happy to do that if that data was to be made available.
Mr. Grokot, can I follow up on your question?
Yeah, be happy.
To T-Mobile, had T-Mobile received any complaints from residents in this area saying we don't have coverage? Because I think you bring up a valid point, Mr. Grokot.
We do not have customer complaint or drop call data that is certainly available, but it's not something that we brought to demonstrate the significant gap, given the strength of the city's expert testimony. But that doesn't mean that there aren't those kinds of complaints. I would be happy to address your question. I don't know if you want me to.
Yeah, go ahead.
The factors that are looked into, and we also have a T-Mobile RF engineer here, the reasons that the federal court in San Francisco didn't consider anecdotal call data to be scientifically reliable was the network changes and breathes over time. There's a fast, busy hour, which is the time when more people are on their phone than not on their phone. Coverage of sites tends to shrink at that time, as the site picks up the closest phone to the site and maybe not a distant phone. There's also a difference of allocation of spectrum based on the signal strength in terms of data transfer. If there is a phone that may get a small amount of data, but a phone that's closer to the site has a stronger data signal, the network will prioritize that site and push off the other phone so that the data signal is either slow or dropped. There are clutter effects that are caused by buildings, as we talked about, and different construction materials and angles of buildings, and where you are in buildings, and that's rarely kept when you're doing these kinds of things. rarely kept when you're doing these kinds of, when the anecdotal phone calls. None of these pieces of data I'm describing are kept when you're doing anecdotal phone calls. There's also foliage clutter, and foliage clutter actually changes seasonally. The most obvious predictor is the distance of the phone to the antenna in terms of signal strength. And then there's something called RF temperature that the FCC actually is involved in creating guidelines for, which is the amount of RF interference from other types of uses, whether it's a Wi-Fi or other cell networks that are in the area. All of these things are some of the factors that are involved in determining the signal strength and how it is received by a particular telephone. There also are legacy telephones in terms of the phone quality of the phone itself, and there are newer generation phones that have new features, that have different reception capabilities. We all heard about the new iPhone and the reception from that. So all of these things come into play when a carrier is trying to establish a network which allows the mobile device to transfer from one cell, one cell area with a consistent signal strength, to another cell area and allow a handoff, a soft handoff. And the handoff occurs not, it's not a hard handoff where you go from one cell to the next, but actually a percentage of the signal in data or voice is carried by each of the cells as they transfer the signal, so that your call is similarly carried from one location to another. The static call in a room without knowing any of these factors is not a predictor of how the network will function during, over a period of time through various capacity loads and through various technologies of voice and data that go through the network and dealing with data speeds and mobile speeds. You have two fairly highly-trafficked roadways going through this area, which also make it a significant alameda de las pulgas, being one of them. And then lastly, I'll say that San Francisco case also said that in-building coverage is a relevant standard, that people expect their phones to work indoors and be able to go outdoors and back again. And the numbers, you probably know, over a third of Americans are now exclusively using wireless phones, and that number is about 45% for families under the age of 30. So the expectations are higher with respect to what the phones will carry. So those are some of the factors that go into the evaluation. The computer models that are created are extremely robust and actually can manipulate all, some of the coefficients I mentioned and additional coefficients when they determine how the network should be set up. Here, T-Mobile came with three locations they wanted to establish to provide the seamless coverage that they wanted. This is the third of three, it's been a two-year process to get there. I hope that begins to answer your question.
It confused it, actually.
Really?
Yes, because...
Let me explain.
No, well...
Sorry, I tried, I tried.
If you can do briefly, if you can do briefly, I have a couple of questions.
All I can say is, quite simply, that I appreciate the efforts of your constituents, and I understand that. And I will say again, the hardest thing for you to do is to take the step to put public infrastructure into a community. We're going where there are these enormous water tanks. When I visited today, somebody looked, came out of his door and said, aren't those ugly? Can you believe those water tanks? But everybody needs water, and it's the same, this is public infrastructure, just like telephone poles or anything else. So there's going to be people around it, but it has this overall public benefit. How can I explain to this to you more simply? Making a phone call in front of my door and saying, hey, it works, can you hear me now, is not the same as making a phone call, hopping in my car, driving down to the store with my headset on, and going into aisle five to get to, you know, to pick up my ham while my emails traffic is coming in, as I travel between the hours of 4:30 and 5:00. In other words, it's a much more complicated transfer between cell sites of different signal strengths affecting the handset that is traveling in different environments without dropping the call. And there's just an enormous difference between those two things. Does that help at all? And if I can't, if that doesn't help, I guess I'll have to give up.
Well, I guess, you know, one thing, here's one, one question I had. You mentioned all these coefficients, right? Time of day, data that's trying to be received, and, you know, someone else is already on that signal with their phone and they're getting certain data, does that cause another phone not to get a call or get as much data, et cetera, et cetera? Okay, you mentioned all these coefficients. Does Dieter's equipment measure that, or is it just a computer model that...
No, what he's, what he is measuring is actual signal strength on the ground. I mean, he's, they're measuring as it moves through a particular area. And they're, you should ask him.
That's enough, that's enough of an answer, that's good, okay. And then you keep talking about the FCC and, you know, federal government, and they sit on top of us and we're only allowed to do so much here.
Yes.
What level of signal is really guaranteed by the FCC? Because when I was reading the staff report, there were some questions that were asked during the planning commission, and T-Mobile said, well, we would like to have this level of service, which didn't really answer the question. What you want to have is a level of service as a company versus what is the minimum standard, which is what the FCC says, could be, and appeared to me in the answers given, were two different things.
Right. And that, the FCC has not said this is adequate coverage in terms of a signal strength. Because it continues to change and modify, the FCC recently auctioned off the 700 megahertz band. In fact, the 2.1 gigahertz band that T-Mobile is going to use is a relatively new band. The bands have to work together in, you've got 850, 1900, 2.1, and 700. And so the FCC specifically doesn't say that this, because they know, that this level of signal strength is some standard for the country. For, what they do say is, we control it. It's our territory. It's like trying to regulate the airplanes, the size of airplanes flying over the city. It is the...
We do do that.
It's in the, the size of the planes, that's good.
And the noise.
But the federal, it's the federal government's geography, and they, and they control how it's regulated, and that's why it's not in your purview. Again, if you were to say, San Carlos thinks negative 95 is all companies need and we're not going to let anything else be provided here, and Oakland made a different standard and San Jose made a different standard, then we would end up with networks that didn't work. And that's why the FCC, what the FCC does, if you own a license, you have to provide a certain percentage of your coverage area for a certain percentage of time in order not to lose your license. But it's terms of percentages in terms of actual signal strength.
Okay.
I hope to answer some of your questions.
I just have one more question.
Please do.
And that has to do, I don't know if you'll answer it or who'll answer it.
I'll try and be brief.
When you went through your list of things that, you know, we...
Other factors.
No, 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 this is a whole different topic.
Okay.
You said there are, federal law hems us into specific objections...
Yes.
...that we can have, and we have to state those if we object. And one of the things I didn't see anything about was noise. And when I was saying noise, I know that this equipment, you know, you have to have fans, and we've looked at these before, okay? So there's the noise factor. And there's also something you didn't, you talked about RF...
Emissions.
Emissions in terms of safety, and this woman said, you know, that's not our concern in the neighborhood, we, you know? But RF interference with other devices and signals that, from other devices, for instance, if you have TV that's antenna-driven, you can get interference from RF to signal.
Let me try and be as brief as I can.
Thank you.
Telecommunications Act of 96 created all these limitations on local jurisdictions' authority to regulate wireless facilities. I talked about environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, substantial evidence, prohibition of service. You also can't discriminate between carriers, and you have to make a decision within a reasonable period of time. Those are the five areas. You specifically asked me about interference with other electronic devices. That, again, is controlled by the FCC. If you look on the back of this monitor, it's going to have an FCC clearance on it, and that's to confirm that the frequencies that are put out by this monitor are not going to interfere with this microphone, which also has RF output, as you probably know. And so the same is true with facilities that are put up by T-Mobile. They are, the frequencies are assigned in a manner that is to avoid interference with other devices such as televisions and that sort of thing. So it simply doesn't happen. And if it did, there are remedies through the FCC in order to resolve that, and webpages and hotlines and all sorts of things. Again, that is not something that is in your purview. I would think thankfully, you don't have to deal with RF interference between devices.
Move on, next one, noise.
There is, I mentioned the substantial body of evidence, substantial, significant evidence, substantial evidence that T-Mobile has provided as opposed to what the, this is a good example, this is what the appellants have provided. There is an acoustic analysis in your materials. It was prepared by Hammonton Edison that shows that the site fully complies with your acoustic standards and codes. So it's, we're there, we're within the acoustical standards, and I don't, I think it was 42 dB at the property line, is that right, Mark? Which is well below the 45 nighttime, 50. We, as you know, we spent a lot of time here, not so long ago, with the Shelford site dealing with acoustic issues. In this case, studies were required and are in your, in your materials that they comply. And if it doesn't, you know that you have plenty of mechanisms to deal with it, including revocation proceedings. But in this case, it is not an issue. And yes, that is one of the areas, just to clarify, that is one of the areas of evidence where you, using your land use authority, have the ability to deny a site, except, except where there's a significant gap, and we've shown this is the least intrusive means. And in that case, where there's, in order to avoid prohibiting service, that actually trumps substantial evidence. Now, we can't, we're not going to violate your code, so I'm not suggesting that. But if this were an ugly tower, and we showed there was a gap and it was the, that this ugly tower was the least intrusive means, then it would have to be approved. Any other, I'm sorry, went on so long. Any other questions? We'll come back if there are.
Mr. Grokka?
No questions.
I have some for our expert, if I could. And Ms. Nelson, you may want to get on deck. Sir, you're using specific test equipment.
Let me clarify one thing. The data here was provided by T-Mobile, was provided to me by the City of San Carlos to review. We did not, we were not hired to make an independent actual measurements. We have done that in some cases for other jurisdictions as an additional service, but it has to be specifically requested. We certainly can do this if the city desires.
Okay, so what we're looking at is data that T-Mobile acquired, and T-Mobile did the measurement, and you came in as an independent consultant to verify that it was done properly.
That is correct.
So again, I'm going to ask the question, what was the equipment that was being used?
The, it's an automated test set. I do not know the specific model number that they use for that. I have seen, I have seen them use certain equipment. One of the services we do sometimes is we actually ride along when the measurements are made. This was not the case in this instant, but it is a specific made, it's an appliance made for this specific measurement, and it consists of a GPS.
Perfect. I will get you to speak in just a moment, let me go back to, I want to follow up on one question. You mentioned that this is an industry standard practice following industry standard methodologies, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
What is the industry group that is putting the standard together?
Well, industry practices, I'm saying, you know, based on, not any specific group...
So it's not the IEEE, it's not...
No, 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 sir.
So it's just a series of best practices that...
It's best practices, and it's specific to a particular technology. Different carriers use different technologies, which require different types of test equipment.
And when you received this data to verify, did you also get any calibration data or any verification that the equipment...
No, we did not.
You did not?
No.
Okay, thank you. I will ask the gentleman to come forward, and, thank you.
Okay.
Please state your name.
Amal Caraba, I'm T-Mobile RF engineer.
Terrific. And you did these measurements?
We hired the company to do the measurement. This is what T-Mobile does, like, we hire a third-party consulting company that do the drive test for us, but we provide them with the equipment.
You provide them with the equipment?
Yeah.
Great, can you tell me what the equipment was?
Okay, for each drive test, what we do, what we do, we have, first, we have two sets of phones. One phone will be doing like a continuous call or a long call. Initially, like, we originate the call, and we keep holding the call till the call drops, and then originate another call and keep holding the call. Another phone will do short calls, which is like a two-minute call. So the phone will originate a call, hold it for two minutes, then force it to drop, originate another call. The third, which is the most important, is a scanner, which is mainly a receiver. Like, we have an antenna with the same gain that the regular mobile has, and we put that antenna on top of a vehicle, and that antenna is connected to a receiver inside the vehicle, which is like, it's not a mobile, but it's the same, the same concept as a mobile, it's just a receiver. And that receiver is connected to our laptop, which has a data collection software. And what that scanner is doing is just scanning the air for any signal coming from T-Mobile sites. It's not related to a specific site. So any site that belongs for T-Mobile that's propagating in that area, that scanner will capture the received signal, and then record it to the laptop. And for sure, we have a GPS, so that's why we can see, like, tracking of the signal on the road.
Okay.
This is basically our drive test equipment.
Great, and then, since this is your equipment, I assume it was calibrated before the tests?
Yeah, sure.
And do you have the certification of that calibration?
We can grab that, I don't do the calibration myself, we send it to the vendor, and the vendor will do the calibration.
Okay. But you are stating that it was calibrated before these tests?
Yeah.
Thank you, I think I'm done. Ms. Nelson? There was an assertion made here that the tower is going to be 50% taller than surrounding trees. Do we have any, I mean, that's a pretty impressive number, is that something we can verify? Is that...
My understanding, seeing the visuals that were presented, was that from an elevation above the water tank site, that the tree would appear 50% taller than the existing trees. We don't have any evidence that that would be the case, we don't have pictures, we don't have a photo sim, simulation from above the site. But no, that's, that's not anything that we would be, that we had been made aware of before the balloon visual.
Do we know how tall the tallest tree is there?
I would have to ask the applicant that. I think it's somewhere in the vicinity of 30-something feet, and the tower is supposed to be 15 feet above that, because it meets this line of sight. So that would put the existing trees in the 30-foot range. And they would always have to be 15 feet less than the antenna for the line of sight.
So no matter...
Looking down on it, you might see more of the tree than if you look directly at it or from below.
Ms. Hill?
I believe the tallest tree on site is about 42 feet.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Grokka.
So if it's 42 feet and the tower has to be 15 feet taller than that for the line of sight, that you're saying the tower's going to be 57 feet?
No, the proposed tower is, the top of the antennas are at 45 feet, but I believe, I'll look on the survey again, but one of the trees, I think that the lower elevation may be about 42 feet. There's a parcel incline, yeah, slopes.
Okay. So it could be 30-something, give or take, just however long the slope is?
Exactly.
Okay.
So Ms. Nelson, no matter how tall the trees are, we're going to have something sticking above at 15 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, we're looking at, the application says 15 feet.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Ms. Nelson, sorry to, just, I want to clarify, is it 15 feet to where the tower is, or 15 feet to the top of the fake pine? Because the fake pine's five feet taller than where the cell phone receptors are.
Well, the pine boughs start, it's built to look like a tree, so it's not...
No, I understand that, but the 15 feet you're talking about, is that where the cell part is located?
It was represented tonight that the top five feet will just be the faux boughs, and that the antenna would be down, so they would be between 45 feet and some distance below that.
So there's an extra five feet added on because of the fake tree?
Right, to make it, to make it look more like a tree, to have a top.
To me, that's still unclear.
It's still unclear, to Mr. Klein's question, I had the same question, and it still hasn't been answered.
I'm going to err on the side of caution, I think it's 20 feet taller.
I think so, too.
Your ordinance that you recently adopted allows for up to 65 feet. So this is lower than your, the maximum in your ordinance, and at a height that provides some coverage without, with the existing trees there acting in a way that helps blend in this faux tree.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Rubens, I have a question for you, I've got, looking at a couple of signs that have been placed in front of you. One of them says, "Keep cell towers out of residential areas." I guess a question I have for you, is that legal?
Well, to answer that question, I have to digress a little bit into Telecommunications Act. As pointed out by counsel for T-Mobile, and as a result of my research over the years, aesthetics can be a reason that you can cause a provider to relocate or place the antenna facility in a different location, which could, could have the effect of moving the antenna from one zoning district to another. However, the law is pretty clear, and the recent cases have talked about this issue of significant gap in coverage as a threshold issue. And the, that issue would trump our ability under the Act to prohibit an antenna at a given location if there is a significant gap in coverage and there's no feasible or less intrusive alternatives available. I think you have a record here that, that talks about that, and I think you've heard a lot of testimony about alternative sites. We did require an alternative sites analysis, and we required the, the coverage data from, from T-Mobile that was considered by the Planning Commission and has been updated for you tonight. So I, I know it's a long answer to your question, but the only basis that we can, on a particular site, not allow an antenna would be aesthetics, but first, we'd have to find that there's no significant gap in coverage, and that there are other feasible alternatives available.
Yeah, Mr. Rubens, I'm going to stay with you for just another minute. I'll attribute one comment to Mr. Grokot that when looking at the neighbors, stated that, "These are the folks that vote for us, and we represent them." I think there's one further step, that we actually represent the city as a whole and have to protect the entire city. I was curious about this court case that was described, that anecdotal phone calls, this is a 2006 case, were non-admissible. So it seems the neighbors have put together some interesting data that shows anecdotally that the coverage works, why, can you tell me why I, this court case tells me I can or can't look at this data?
Well, I'm not, I think the case is the MetroPCS versus City and County of San Francisco case that, that they're talking about. It's, I think it's a matter of substantial evidence. I think courts, when some, this is sort of a hornbook explanation, but I think I'll give it a try for you. When someone is not necessarily qualified to present evidence, in my, in my mind, that is what makes it more anecdotal than expert opinion. And so what, the evidence you have before you is the consultant by T-Mobile and their, their reports, and the peer review by the, by the City of San Carlos that, that we requested as part of this process, that evaluated the different locations. What you, I think that's what that case was, was implying, I, I could take a look at it more closely to find the place you're there talking about.
I'm going to summarize what I'm hearing, which is the idea of the substantial gap that T-Mobile has commissioned a study, the city put an independent review upon it, and says, through the independent verification, there was an agreement that there was a significant gap. And while the neighborhood has done interesting, compelling, compelling work, that at this point, it looks like the courts would say, "That's not interesting enough." Am I making a fair assertion in this point?
Well, sometimes it's, it's hard to predict what a court will do, but I can refer to a case, there are cases where that was a factual issue, but it was not as a result of anecdotal evidence, it was a result of a conflict between the experts. So, so I think that that's the, we don't have that situation here, we have a situation where we have evidence scattered by the, by the neighborhood, and I think we can all agree that it was a lot of work by the neighborhood, and it, and it shows, there's no reason to dispute that it didn't show that there was a signal at those different places when they reported it. However, I think the courts are going to look to the provision of wireless services and the nondiscrimination provisions under the Act. And I think, in my opinion, the, the idea of coverage has changed over the years, even since the Act was passed in 1996. And that's primarily driven by the service, services that are available and feasible with the devices that we now have. Things that our, our phones or our handheld computers was what they'd amount to are capable of doing now were not, not feasible just a few years ago, and I think that's what's driving this, that's what the Act is driving for. The Act is driving for as many providers as possible and competition. That's very clear from the cases, the cases all talk about what the intent of the Act was. And so we're locally, I've used this word, we're preempted. I mean, it'd be nice if we had more discretion locally where to place these towers. And as the mayor points out, you know, my job as the city attorney is to protect the city, and there, I mean, we, we got a 10-page letter from the attorney for T-Mobile, the 10-page letter, I wish I could tell you that everything in that about the law is wrong, because it's not entirely wrong. I mean, there may be a difference of opinion on the facts and the basis for things, but he's citing the same cases my research say are, are the cases that apply. And my research is the MetroPCS case versus City and County of San Francisco, the SprintPCS versus the City of Palos Verdes, and the T-Mobile versus City of Ana Cortez. Those are, those are the key cases, and those are cases that were mentioned in, in the letter from T-Mobile. Your job, I think, is to evaluate the evidence that you have. I think there, you know, a court could, would a court categorically say, "No, you can't rely on the evidence that you have from the neighbors here?" I probably can't say that. But I think the law, the way the law is headed is that we need, the way the law is worded is significant gap in coverage and provision of personal wireless service in a nondiscriminatory way is what the law is, binds the city to deal with. And if, if there is a significant gap in coverage, and there's no other feasible alternative, we, we're constrained by federal law, we don't have a lot of options, and I, and, you know, that's the case, that's the status of the law right now.
Mr. Klein.
I have a question. This is going to go with the fact that we have an expert, and maybe our expert can let us know, how many times have you consulted, I mean, you may not have the answer, but how many times have you consulted, done a peer review and found that there wasn't a significant gap?
I've personally done approximately eight different reviews similar to this, and, you know, there's, it involved looking at alternative sites and so forth, but in all instances, you know, we, the wireless carrier was, was able to demonstrate that there was a gap. And as I mentioned before, in some cases, we were actually independently requested to use our own test equipment and verify it. So, short answer is no, there's never been a case where we've been able to disprove that, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Gentlemen, any further questions? Any further comments, gentlemen? We'll take a comment of, I can get a motion on something when we're going to have a question.
Mr. Mayor, you know, these are the kind of situations that just drive you crazy when you're sitting up here, and this is, and I've been up here for five years, and I don't think there's a person on here that, that is going to say, "I'll just say it," because somebody's got to say it. We are hamstrung here. The, the law and the cases that Mr. Albritton have, have, have mentioned, there are times when local authority can't make a decision, I equate it to like a, Mr. Rubens, I think a home, folks want to set up a home and have elderly people come and live there, isn't that another one, where the state of California trumps us, correct?
Right, there's four small group homes, about six residents.
Periodically, we come up against this, and, and none of us want to, I mean, we see the people here, we live here. It's not like we just get, we just get flown in for the meetings and then we fly out. We want to do what's right by our citizens and for our city. Nobody wants to have a pole 22 feet or 120 feet from their house. I, I wouldn't. And of course, there may be 120 feet that I don't know about, that's there. We're hamstrung on this thing. In my, in my situation, I'm going to have to vote for this, or vote rather to deny the appeal. It's not something I want to do, but I, I feel like it's for the betterment of our city that I have to do this, because quite honestly, according to, to our legal counsel and according to the law that I read, we're trumped. And it's not a pleasant situation. And I know I'm speaking for everybody else up here, that this is one of the hardest ones we have to do. But I'm going to make the motion, and see if there's a second, to deny the appeal of Mark Weinberger and uphold the decision of the Planning Commission, thereby approving the conditional use permit and architecture review for new wireless antenna facility for T-Mobile West Corporation at 882 Heather Drive.
A motion, do we have a second?
Sit through, Mayor.
Ms. Nelson.
And there's additional language on the screen that includes, sorry, that includes the findings and the conditions included.
Well, let me restate my motion then, Ms. Nelson. Thank you for correcting me, I'm just reading off what we have here. Let the city council deny the appeal of Mark Weinberger and uphold the Planning Commission decision of a conditional use permit and architecture review for a new wireless antenna facility for T-Mobile West Corporation at 882 Heather Drive by adopting the findings and conditions included in Attachment 1. Thank you.
Is a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll make a second, but I would like to add some thoughts.
Absolutely. We have a motion and a second, I would like a motion to extend our time by 15 minutes.
Make a motion to extend the meeting time by 15 minutes.
Second. Without objection, that's the order. We'll take discussion. Mr. Royce, you started.
Yeah, just, again, just, people have been patient to be here a long time, and you've done a lot of work. I always like to think a little bit about where we've been and where we're going with all this stuff. The technology is what we're talking about. Train station was built in, what, 1888, I think it was Morse code, and then we had telephone lines, and we're up to wireless, and now we're transmitting, you know, photos, now videos, now high definitions. I think the first thing I'll say is, technology is great, but it impacts people differently. There's a cost to do it, but there's also, you know, cost of all those other citizens that if you took away their, their TV and their internet and their wireless, there's a cost to that, too. So it is, although, what I really feel is this, what's really tough for me is this stuff is changing. There are, this whole thing of wireless is fairly new. The whole thing of your, and I'm not a engineer, electrical engineer, but this whole thing of, of your, the frequency tables, and we're dealing with 2 megahertz or 2 gigahertz, but, you know, the government has this 40 and 60 gigahertz stuff that is really fast and really small. You know, we dealt with AM radio for years and years. AM radio is pretty scary stuff, what we used to do in the Bay Area, big waves, and we, everybody had an AM radio, you still do, and no one's talked about AM. But change is there. Satellite, we have satellite now, dishes and so forth. You know, this whole wireless thing, eventually, I mean, if, if, we want to get a clear signal, again, I'm not a technical person, but if you shoot it from the satellite, I think it could cover everybody, you know, without any of these stations. And it was interesting, it relates to even the applications, how thirsty San Carlos people are. They had an article in Wall Street this morning, really interesting, on how the, in Japan, with their disaster, there's three applications that they never even used are the top three in the country. One is for first aid assistance, one is for edu, for earthquake assistance, and the third one is, doesn't even use Wi-Fi, it's using a flashlight. But it shows you that in two weeks, how application, what people thirst for technology, and what we thirst, and what I would like to see, I mean, my, I see a dream where we don't have coaxial, we don't have telephone lines, we could take the poles down, put the power down where the sewer and, and the power, and the gases, don't put the power next to the gas, by the way, but, and get rid of all the telephone poles, get rid of all that visual stuff. So, so I'm, you know, if there's one ray of hope, there will be change, but I don't want to mask the fact that this is, when you live in a cul-de-sac, cul-de-sacs, excuse me, you live there because you know how special it is. So when you talk about traffic, you know, you only get a couple cars, and all of a sudden, you get that third or fourth car. It's major, because that's why you enjoy your privacy, you enjoy your views, and a lot of the points you make are all there. So, but, but I do, you know, look at how we can minimize the impact to a real special neighborhood, because you're so passionate about why you bought there. And yet, you know, the legal issues that our city attorney has put out are fairly important. So even though I did second that, I didn't want to, to express my thought process as a council member on, on how tough this is for, for us to try to satisfy everybody in San Carlos and your neighborhood, and move through the technology that we're going to see change significantly in the next five years.
Mr. Grokot.
Well, I guess I'm going to be the contrarian, because while I understand what everyone is saying that, you know, we represent the city, we have to protect the city and so Number one, when you, I found, Mr. Mayor, your questions of the experts and of this gentleman over here, very interesting, because what I heard him say, basically, was that he did a test with two phones, doing two different kinds of things, one, a long-term call, and then a short-term call. No different from what these guys did. Not, not that I could tell, they used phones, he used phones. Then he said, "I also used a receiver, we drove around, we had a GPS device," and so on and so forth. Okay, granted, that's different, but he also said, "What's in that receiver is essentially the same antenna technology and everything else that's in a cell phone." So, cell phones, cell phones. I was also, I found it very interesting when I asked the question, do we have any, do they have any data, T-Mobile, about drop call complaints? And they were stymied. Nobody. Said, "Oh, we could go dig it up, maybe we might find it in a closet somewhere back at our offices, but no, we don't have it with us." Mr. Rubens said, made these comments about what is empirical evidence and what isn't, and this was a court case, and this is how they ruled, but truth be told, if these people's evidence was going to get thrown out, the only way you're going to find out is go back to court. That's really That's really the only way you're going to determine that. And we are the first line of defense for them. And so if it would come to that, I don't think necessarily it would. I would hope it wouldn't. I would hope that if we denied this, T-Mobile might look at some of these other alternative sites that these guys brought up and look at the coverage there before they decide to go suing the city, which they know would be bad for business and they've already heard that they've lost some customers because of this whole deal. I don't think it's good for T-Mobile to go around suing cities. And I'm willing to take that risk. So I don't see the gap because I don't see the gap from customers complaining about a gap and I didn't see it in their evidence, I only saw it in theirs. And theirs was no different. The other thing I heard was, with all due respect to Dieter, is he even said, "Sometimes I'm asked to go around with and verify in the vehicle and so forth as, as the things are looked at." And he didn't do that. All he did was look at their data, right? Did not go around with a third-party piece of equipment and verify their testing. So we don't have third-party testing. We just have, you know, the proverbial fox guarding the chicken house, their technology versus their technology or their testing. That's all we have. And I'm willing to trust that over there over this over here. So I will vote against it. I guess, to be clear, I would uphold the appeal, the Marx deal.
Mr. Griselli.
I've already made the motion, I made my comments.
Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You know, this is a tough one. We've had a couple of these now and these are the least favorite of my nights up here. Surprisingly, I'd rather talk about budget than cellphone towers. There's a couple of things, and so, Mr. Rubens, you're going to have to help me out. If, if there's a significant gap, that trumps noise and aesthetics, correct?
Yeah, it can, both, both of those.
If there's not a significant gap, then aesthetics and noise matter.
Well, I, I don't think the analysis would end there necessarily because you still have the alternatives, alternative sites analysis and the nondiscrimination analysis. But if there is no significant gap in coverage, then I think it goes without saying that there are probably other sites.
Better, better.
That might be better. And, you know, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, because I'm leaning towards where Mr. Grokot, where Mr. Grokot's going and I know that makes it really tough for other council members up here, based on the fact that I don't truly believe there's a significant gap. We have the data, the, to correct what Mr. Grokot said, the gentleman from Verizon didn't actually do it, it was a third party that did it, but you calibrated the machines. So it wasn't even Verizon doing the test.
T-Mobile.
Oh, T-Mobile, sorry. And our expert himself said he didn't do the test, he, you know, checked the data. He's also never disagreed with the data being presented, so that sends up a red flag to me, to have someone who's never disagreed. I would have rather had an expert who had occasionally said, "No, this is wrong." Because then, you know, at least they show an attempt at a time to say that what the company came forward with was wrong. So if I don't believe there's a significant gap, I have to take aesthetics into consideration. And they, they're talking about building this tree, this faux tree, that's fifteen to twenty feet higher than the trees around it, and it's supposed to blend in because it's a tree. It's like going to an elementary school, seeing a bunch of kids who are four-two and one of them's five-ten. That kid doesn't blend in. I'm sorry, it sticks out like a sore thumb. Fifteen to twenty feet higher than everything else around it, while if you're at the base level, it doesn't make a difference. But if you're those homes who live above, it does make a great deal of difference. It is much larger. You know, and I understand that we are, we are, hands are tied and we may have to pass this anyways, but I, I just, I don't believe there's a significant gap. No one's shown me proof that there's a significant gap. I, I'm going to believe what our residents say. I believe they were able to make those phone calls. Maybe they didn't do the tests as well, but from what I'm hearing, the tests that, that T-Mobile did are very similar to the tests that the residents did. Show me a better test. If you could remove that doubt from my mind, I believe there's a significant gap and it makes everything else moot. To the residents, I, Mr. Grokot referred to us as your first line of defense. You really got to write your Congresswoman. This is a, a federal issue. If you really want to make, you know, make a difference in this, write your Congresswoman. They're the ones who passed this act, they're the ones who've taken us all, you know, to the federal level. It's a lot of unintended consequences. They wanted to keep competition going, they wanted lower rates. Well, that also means all this exploded. So, you know, do us the favor and, and write your Congresswoman because they're the ones who actually do control this. But I'd like to hear what the other council members say, but right now, I'm, I'm leaning towards what Mr. Grokot said. And I hate to do it because I hate to put three of you guys on the spot like that, but I, I just don't believe the test. It hasn't proven without, I still have too much doubt to believe in it.
So I will offer these thoughts. Boy, there's so much more I'd rather do and I'm certain you folks would rather be home tonight. In looking at this, I, I do look at what is the appropriate protection for the city and what is our exposure. I am not terribly impressed with the study that T-Mobile put forward. I would argue it's anemic. As much as you can tell me that you hired a third party, stuff was calibrated, I, I would have preferred an independent verification of the data rather than a survey of data saying, "Okay, the data was appropriately gathered." I'm aware of network programming and network planning and it is hard for somebody to have anecdotal evidence, and I'll use this one point. You know, when, when working at Netscape or Napster or any other large website like the 2002 Olympics, you might say, "Well, the average person should get a page in fifteen seconds or whatever else." Well, during big events or different times of day, you have to plan, how is your network supposed to be built? It's easy to pull a point in time and say, "It looks like the network is working fine, but how do you actually work for peak demand?" That requires some real network engineering, which also does make me look a little as conscious of T-Mobile and say, "I didn't see that in your study." If you're really going to talk to me about doing time of day demand, then I would have preferred to see actual data as opposed to a model, or at least be able to back it up. But I didn't see that. Here's the unfortunate part. I believe if it's presented to a court, your data is going to hold water. Don't know why, but it probably will. I am heartened to hear that removal of trees is not going to move forward. The, as much as it's, "Write your Congresswoman," part of this also goes back to the 1996 court with Judge Green. So we are dealing with court acts that need to be followed up with real work at the federal level. Unfortunately, what I'm looking at is, is unclear anemic data from T-Mobile, data that while compelling, I am being shown court cases that say would probably not be admissible, so I'm, I'm stuck in that respect. What I will, in a very frustrated sense, have to do is, is maintain the position of the planning commission and I would fully expect that the neighborhood is looking at a court case as the next step. I would strongly recommend to the neighborhood getting a verifiable test done. Because I think that'll be the right thing to do, to verify those things. And I'm sorry that it has to go there. With that, if there are no further questions, I will call the question.
Councilman Griselli.
Yes.
Councilman Grokot.
No.
Councilman Klein.
I'm not going to let you guys hang out in the wind, so I'm going to vote yes, I'm sorry.
Councilman Moore.
Yes.
And Mayor Mon.
Yes. Folks, I know it's not what you wanted to hear and I wish you the best of luck on your next step. With that, we are going to be moving to closed session.